Welcome, everybody. We're going to start in a few minutes. We're still getting some folks on the phone here. I would like to call to order this special meeting of the Anchorage Assembly. It is Thursday, October 7, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Mr. Weddleton?
Here.
Ms. Hallard?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Mr. Rivera?
Present.
Ms. Kennedy?
Here.
Ms. LaFrance?
Here.
Mr. Constant?
Here.
Ms. Solitell?
Here.
Mr. Dunbar?
Here.
Mr. Perez Verdia?
Here.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Ms. Kennedy, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Rivera, would you read the land acknowledgement, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. A land acknowledgement is a formal statement recognizing the indigenous people of a place. It is a public gesture of appreciation for the past and present indigenous stewardship of the lands that we now occupy. It is an actionable statement that marks our collective movement towards decolonization and equity. The Anchorage Assembly would like to acknowledge that we gather today on the traditional lands of the Denina Athabaskans. For thousands of years, the Denina have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. It is with gratefulness and respect that we recognize the contributions, innovations, and contemporary perspectives of the upper Cookin Denina.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Welcome back, everybody. I'm going to go over a few things, and then we're going to go ahead and proceed with public testimony, continued public testimony on AO 2021-91. First of all, I want to note that on the agenda for this special meeting, there are two other ordinances. There are Assembly members working with the administration on suspensions and amendments, and the intent is to postpone action and continue the public hearing for these items to a later date. I do not expect we will be taking up these items today. Also want to note that the meeting is being recorded, and it becomes difficult to hear when there is noise or more than one person speaks at a time. Motion such as points of order and information, they're what we call interruptible motions and can be made at any time. And when such a motion is made, I ask that all members stop talking when one of these motions is on the floor. After addressing the motion, I will return back to the member who had the floor or who was in the queue next. I'll go over a few rules again, and I'm asking members of the public to help create a climate of respect as we move through this public hearing. Please keep signs to 8.5 by 11 or smaller in size. Refrain from personal attacks, direct comments to me or other people on the dais. Please remain quiet while others are speaking. Wait for your turn at the podium to speak. Respect the personal space of other people. Refrain from shouting, clapping, pacing, and personal attacks. And again, the noise also interferes with the audio. It makes it harder for people to hear what other people are saying, especially those folks who are on the phone. I want to note that the Wildomarston Theater is open, and people can also go in there and watch the meeting. It's my job as Chair to maintain order during the meetings. If rules are not followed, I may interrupt speakers to call for compliance. If compliance with the rules doesn't occur, then I may pause the meeting. If there's an actual disruption, I or the vice chair will give a warning. If the disruption persists or happens again, the person will be asked to leave. We want to hear from as many people as possible this evening. The Clerk can provide names of testifiers to Assembly members for follow-up. Assembly members are asked to consider using their aides to help connect with members of the public with whom they'd like to further discuss the ordinance. Mr. Turner has the Assembly member business cards available for members of the public who would like to get contact information for Assembly members. They can also give their contact information to Mr. Turner. We will have at least two breaks to allow for some further discussion among Assembly members with members of the public. Right now, I am planning to break at 7:00 PM and at 9:00 PM, and members, of course, may step out as needed. The hearing will likely go long. I want to note that there are copies of the amendments available to the public, and also that the Assembly can't act on an item until the public hearing is closed. No motions can be made to approve or postpone indefinitely until it's closed. And I want to note that there have been a variety of questions as to why we're continuing the public hearing. I want to refer the body and the public to Anchorage Municipal Code Section 2.30.055E, which states, "If any time scheduled for public hearing proves inadequate to hear all persons present to testify, the public hearing shall be continued." So as has been stated multiple times throughout these days of testimony, we will continue this public hearing until all voices present have been heard. I'm going to go over a few more rules, and then I'm going to address another issue. And thank you for being here tonight, and thanks for participating in your local government. As a reminder, when you come forward to testify, please state your name, community council or area of the union in which you live. Please stay on topic. The proposed ordinance, again, is not about vaccines or treatment. It's only about face masks. It's helpful if testifiers provide comments on the proposed amendments. Also, you may want to address in your testimony how the proposed ordinance would affect you and your family or your business. You'll have three minutes, and per AMC 2.30.080C, per my role as Chair, I shall instruct, quote, "the members of the public to be as brief as possible," end quote. And now, I would like to address the practice of Assembly member and mayor questions to members of the public who are testifying during the public hearing. In short, I believe that a dilatory pattern of misuse of procedure has been firmly established over the last five days of continued public hearings. This is an unusual situation and rare circumstances we are in. It's my role as Chair to protect the body from dilatory actions, facilitate our meeting to expedite the business needing action on our agenda, and ensure that public hearings are conducted fairly. Anchorage Municipal Code 2.30.00080... or dot I states that, "In all matters not covered by this chapter, Robert's Rules of Order newly revised shall govern." AMC 2.30.055, and that AMC is Anchorage Municipal Code, "conduct of public hearings does not address the issue of Assembly member questions to members of the public during public testimony." I'm going to pause for a moment, Madam Clerk, because I believe we may have lost the sound with members on the phone. Can we do a sound check?
Yes, Madam Chair. Can I please check to see... Mr. Peterson, are you on the phone?
Yes, I am.
Mr. Constant, are you on the phone?
Yeah, we can hear you again.
Okay. Ms. Solitell?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Yeah, I'm here too. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. We've let IT know about the drop again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chapter 2.30 Rules of Procedure for the Assembly does not say anything about allowing or prohibiting questions to people testifying. It is something we allow in usual practice, but this is not a usual circumstance. While Robert's Rules addresses public hearings only by referring back to the rules adopted by this body, it does charge the Chair with the duty of protecting the body from the misuse of parliamentary reforms for dilatory purposes in Section 39, such as the repeated use of motions, questions, or procedures to delay the public hearings on AO 2021-91. So as to the question, what makes something dilatory? Page 342 of the 11th edition of Robert's Rules defines a dilatory motion as "a motion is dilatory if it seeks to obstruct or thwart the will of the Assembly as clearly indicated by the existing parliamentary situation." This same page talks about, as further examples, "it is dilatory to obstruct business by appealing from a ruling of the Chair and a question about which there cannot possibly be two reasonable opinions; by demanding a division on a vote even when there has been a full vote on the result is clear; by moving to lay on the table the matter for which a special meeting has been called; by constantly raising points of order and appealing from the Chair's decision on them; or by moving to adjourn again and again when nothing has happened to justify renewal of such a motion. By use of such tactics, a minority of two or three members could bring business to a standstill," end quote. Last, page 342 of the 11th edition of Robert's Rules does state that, quote, "It is the duty of the presiding officer to prevent members from misusing the legitimate forms of motions or abusing the privilege of renewing certain motions merely to obstruct business," end quote. Per Charter 17.05, members of the public have a reasonable right to be heard during the meeting. And per AMC 2.30.055 governing our public hearing, members of the public are allotted the same amount of time to speak. Nothing provides for additional time through dilatory questioning and requesting more information not part of the speaker's content in their allotted time. Assembly members and the mayor's questions can effectively provide certain members of the public with more time to speak, which is not fair. Assembly member questions of testifiers have also frequently been inappropriately used to conduct debate with members of the public, which has the effect of discouraging public testimony under threat of having their testimony challenged by political figures here at the dais. It is my intent as Chair to conduct the public hearing in a manner that is fair. Further, the public hearing is not a time for debate and discussion, and this has been misused. Robert's Rules provides limits to members' right to debate. A pattern of dilatory questions has been established whereby the questions raised by members during the public hearing have interfered with the rights of members of the public to be heard. Moreover, this pattern has at times doubled or tripled the usual three-minute time for a speaker. Folks, please mute. We have heard from hundreds of individuals testifying on AO 2021-91 and heard multiple viewpoints, pros and cons. At this point, we are not likely to hear any new facet to the support or opposition to the ordinance. Other than personal impact stories and additional questions to speakers serves little purpose other than the dilatory pattern. I will not infringe on the public's right to speak at this public hearing for the three minutes each person is allotted. For all of these reasons is my ruling as Chair that for the remainder of the public hearing, AO 2021-91, questions from members of the body and the mayor to members of the public testifying will not be entertained. Because the Charter states that the mayor may participate in all assembly meetings to the same extent as an assembly member but may not vote, my ruling applies to the mayor as well. Charter at 5.02B powers the mayor. I will hear a challenge to this ruling once, and that will be now.
Madam Chair, I apologize I'm down here, but I'm going to do a point of order.
Ms. Hallard, what is the rule you believe has been broken?
I'd like to ask Legal, please. In regards to you not allowing public officials to ask the constituents and those they represent questions in regard to a very...
Ms. Hallard, that is not a proper point of order. It needs to be in a question form.
Madam Chair, I would... Okay, let's see. This is Jeopardy. Let me think for a second.
Ms. Hallard, if you would like to ask that question in a different format, you will need to move to overrule the Chair.
Madam Chair, I move to override the ruling of the Chair.
Second.
The motion has been moved by... to overrule the ruling of the Chair by Ms. Kennedy and seconded by Ms. Hallard. Is there discussion? Actually, Ms. Kennedy, you made the motion. Go ahead. Sorry.
Thank you. No, I appreciate that, and you know, and I certainly understand the idea of not trying to prolong, especially when we have people who have waited so patiently for so many days. But I do have significant legal concerns over whether or not you can actually keep members of the Assembly from engaging with the public during their testimony, and I also wonder if that was intended to include the potential for eliminating or limiting any kind of procedural challenge. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Are there any other questions or... or is there any other debate?
Madam Chair, I apologize. I'm over here still.
Ms. Hallard?
Yes, I am very concerned that you are... the Chair's ruling is setting precedence for elected officials not to be able to ask their constituency or those that they might not even represent questions, and I do believe this would be legally challenged, and I do want to ask for legal advice on this.
Thank you, Ms. Hallard. I will reiterate that in my statement, this is specific to this public hearing for this specific ordinance, and in no way is intended to be applied to any future public hearings. It is only in this specific case. And if... and I will put the question... I will restate your question, and you can tell me if it's accurate, that you would like to get a legal opinion on this ruling, and if so, is that correct? You would like to get a legal opinion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And I'd like to follow up with a comment, if you'd allow.
Okay. Well, what I would suggest, then, is we recess for five to 10 minutes, preferably five, for Legal to prepare their response, and go ahead with your comment.
My comment is that you were explaining that the questioning that we are asking our constituents or the persons out here publicly testifying, that they are only allowed to testify on the mask. The ordinance that is in front of us, AO 2021-91, an ordinance of the Anchorage Municipal Assembly regarding public health and safety measures for COVID-19 pandemic, does not just reference mask. It references a very... a variety of issues. So when individuals of the body decide to ask constituents or members of the public questions, other members of the body will call a point of order because they may disagree, although it is relevant. And they... other members of the body aren't being respectful when questions actually have meaning to them, when individuals are responding. So when you take your... the AO that's been presented by Mr. Peterson and Ms. Solitell, it absolutely is relevant to everything going on in our community, whether it's the vaccine, whether it's CDC, whether it's the MOA, whether it's Mayor Bronson, whether it's Department of Health and Social Services, it's absolutely in this entire AO. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Hallard, and I think that we'll go ahead and perhaps we can continue through the queue, okay, while Legal is conducting its analysis. Mayor Bronson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to defer to municipal manager Amy Domboski.
Ms. Domboski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, there are multiple Supreme Court Ninth Circuit's opinions on the freedom of speech of elected officials. There's a much higher bar because they represent people, and through previous court decisions, it has been very clear that stifling, objecting, or otherwise inhibiting the free speech of elected officials has a much higher bar. I believe the actions you are engaging in are frankly illegal. But beyond that... Beyond that, and Legal can... they can reference the court cases that I'm referring to, rules that cannot be suspended. This is coming right out of Robert's Rules. Rules contained in the bylaws cannot be suspended, no matter how large a vote in favor of doing so, or how inconvenient the rule in question may be. So I would point you to 25-7 in Robert's Rules. Just because you don't like members asking questions doesn't mean that you can just stop it. I think there's legal precedents, and if this motion goes forward, I anticipate legal action on behalf of the administration.
Thank you, Ms. Domboski. We'll go to Mr. Perez Verdia, then Mr. Constant, and then Mr. Rivera. Mr. Perez Verdia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items I want to ask about. First is the question that was posed by Ms. Kennedy, and that is, will this ruling affect members' ability to present a point, a point of order, a point of information? Does it impact that? It's clear that it would impact our ability to ask a question, but does it impact our ability to make up a point of order or a point of information? That's the first question. The second question is just a question related to what the city manager just said. She read that rules suspended. My question is, is this a suspension of a rule, or is this simply a ruling of the Chair? Thank you. I would appreciate answers to both of those from you or the administration.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Verdia. I am happy to speak to your questions concerning the point of order and point of information. Those, as I mentioned, are interruptible motions and can be made at any time. So if members have questions about procedure, members can ask those at any time. If members have objections to or believe a rule has not been followed, at any time a member can raise that point as well. And your second question had to do with whether this was a ruling of the Chair or a change in our... what was... change in our...
Yeah, I can say it more specifically. I probably didn't say it very well.
Suspending the rule?
My understanding, from what the city manager said, is it was a suspension of an established rule, and I didn't necessarily understand whether allowing members and the mayor to ask questions was an established rule that we were suspending. Can you address that, please?
Understood. Well, the passage that the municipal manager cited in Robert's Rules concerning the statement that bylaws can't be suspended does not apply here because we do not have bylaws. So that is irrelevant, and in this case, it is the ruling of the Chair that is being challenged.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Verdia. Mr. Constant?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a couple of points that I would like to enter into the record. The purpose of the rule that the Chair is establishing, that in this case, that the dilatory process of questioning ad infinitum every testifier, and in fact, at times bullying them with their questions, is in fact not a procedure that's allowed. The code specifically allows members of the public under public hearings to be heard. It does not grant an elected official the right to question them, inquisit them, or do anything along those lines. And while there have been customary practices where that has been the case, in this case, the custom has been abused. Now, all one has to do as a member of the body is to look through the emails that we have received, the voluminous emails, to see examples, in her own words, the member from Eagle River telling her supporters in the public that her purpose is to delay the process. So in her own words, outside of a convenient meeting, it's been clearly established that the purpose of these issues is to delay. Dilatory motions, dilatory actions are what Robert's Rules of Order protects us from. Robert's Rules of Order is in our code. At this time, I would ask members to uphold the ruling of the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So a few things, since one of the members, and I believe the municipal manager, talked about precedent, I just want to read a little bit from Robert's Rules on what it states about precedent. So this is reading from page 252 of the 11th edition. So, quote, "When similar issues arise in the future, such precedents are persuasive in resolving them. That is, they carry weight in the absence of overriding reasons for following a different course, but they are not binding on the Chair or the Assembly. The weight given to precedents increases with the number of times the same or similar rulings have been repeated, and with the length of time during which the Assembly has consistently adhered to them." So it's... the Chair has made it fairly clear that this ruling is not meant to create precedence, but it is specifically for this item. I, along with Mr. Constant, will be supporting the Chair in her ruling, and curious to see what the attorneys have to say. And to address the question that I believe both Mr. Perez Verdia and Ms. Kennedy raised, there is no rule in Municipal Code or in Robert's Rules of Order that allows for questions. It is just a practice of the body. So I think it is appropriate that altering such a practice be made through a ruling of the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. And if I could just remind folks on the phone to keep their phones muted. Thank you. Mayor Bronson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I defer to municipal manager Amy Domboski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I want to point out two things. I mean, I appreciate Mr. Rivera's commentary. However, when he talks about non-binding, the First Amendment is binding on everyone, so that's not a non-binding issue. But secondly, and I will also quote from Robert's Rules, "Rules protecting the basic right of the individual member cannot be suspended. It is a basic right of an elected official to engage the public and ask questions when they're testifying." So you are... public and ask questions when they're testifying. So you are fundamentally violating not only the spirit of Roberts' Rules, but as I believe court precedent will show, and we will find out very soon here in Anchorage, that you cannot do this. You cannot stifle a dissenting member just because you don't like the questions they're asking.
Mr. Gates?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And I guess there's a few points to make here, a few legal points to make, but I'm going to try to just make a few, be as short as I can. First, I fedded the chair's points that she read out, and I agree with them. I would also like to address, I guess, what this ruling actually is. It's very narrow. It's very defined. It doesn't affect any member of the public who wants to speak for three minutes at this public hearing on this ordinance. This is specific to one ordinance that's on our agenda. It's specific to these circumstances that we have. We're on our sixth day of using our city resources and time and so forth, and that's, I think, might be unprecedented. I recall maybe a decade ago, we went into a multi-day public hearing for one item. I don't think it went into six. I'm not quite sure. But this is a very specific circumstance and very unprecedented. I would say that if this rule were proposed last week, you know, probably, maybe, there was some merit to municipal manager's points. But today, I don't think so. This is very specific, and it's very much in line with the chair of the assembly's role, which is to facilitate business of our assembly so that we can get it done and finish our agenda. It's also her role to ensure that members of the public have their charter-giving right to testify at a public hearing, which they are going to be allowed to do, which they are going to be allowed to do fairly, I think she pointed out several times, fairly, three minutes per person, not three minutes plus several minutes of questions and expansion and adding additional information that wasn't even addressed in the first three minutes. I think she made that very clear, and you know, correct me if I'm wrong. So I also want to mention that, yes, our municipal manager, Ms. Domboski, I mean, I respect her very much. She's very smart. I've known her for a while. But she's not an attorney, as far as I remember. And although she cites Ninth Circuit case, and she's probably correct in what she reads from it, I don't think that that controls in the situation here. It is true, public officials have a First Amendment right to speak, and that's not really being infringed here. This is a very narrowly tailored rule to rare specific circumstance, to help us compelling business of the municipality related to important public health issues. And there are maybe other alternatives to asking almost every single member of the public questions at the end of their three minutes. Those alternatives are available to every single member of the assembly. You can take the names of the person who spoke, if you want to call them back later, during debate and discussion. This ruling doesn't affect anything during debate and discussion, and the debate and discussion is really what that Ninth Circuit ruling was about, during debate and discussion and making motions and so forth. Nothing in this narrow ruling affects those rights of the assembly members. So I do believe that this ruling would be upheld through a court of law, but I'm just one attorney here at the table, and there's more than two. But of course, I expect, Ms. Tony Burke may be commenting on this as well. And in First Amendment jurisprudence, there's often diverging opinions. This is mine. This is valid. It's narrow, it's narrow enough that it would pass legal muster. And I think it's very necessary in order for us to get through a public hearing that is just extraordinary in the history of municipalities' public hearings. Let me see. I believe there were a couple of other points I wanted to make, but perhaps they'll come back to me if I might speak again later.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My concern in all of this, more importantly, is actually the ability for the public to speak in regard to any issue on this ordinance that they, that they want to. So I just wanted better clarification on what it was your intent in terms of when you said that everyone should stick to the conversation about masks. And I know Ms. Allard brought that up as well, but there is a great deal of stuff in this ordinance that refers to remote learning or remote work, vaccinations, testing. So I certainly want to make sure that the public would not be called out of order if they decided to speak to anything in the ordinance other than masks themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. It is not my intent to vary from the practice we have established concerning the content of the testimony of members of the public, which has varied quite widely in scope and to some degree in manner. We had someone sing a song. It is my intent to ensure that everyone has three minutes. And while the code instructs me to instruct the members of the public to be brief as possible, and also folks who testify are asked to remain on topic, as we have addressed, I believe it was on Tuesday, or maybe it was Monday, I can't remember which meeting, I am not going to force anybody to do that unless there is an egregious violation in terms of, if someone is so out of line, as we have seen, like to use profanity, then in that case, they're, they can't continue. We've seen that already. So it is not my intent to restrict the content. I just, again, would say to members of the public that to be most effective, if you actually suggest amendments and address ways in which, if you would like to see this changed or not, that can be helpful. Does that answer your question? And I would just add too that, again, we are only talking about this very specific public hearing for this ordinance. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Perez Verdia?
Thank you. I think you did address my comment. A, we are debating your ruling, and your ruling did not include anything about the scope of the testimony from the public. And I appreciated that, that my interpretation was that you were giving some, you know, encouragement to the public to, to share things that are relevant to the, to the item we have in front of us. I would agree with the comments that the item before us has a broad scope. And I would encourage us to not limit public testimony in any way and allow the public, as long as it's respectful, as you mentioned, that the topics and the stories and the information they shared should be their own, and that that's not what this is about. This is about how we, as a body and administration, engage with the public after they've finished their testimony. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Verdia. We'll go back over to Mr. Burke. Did you want to weigh in?
Yep. To Chair Patrick Burke for the record. I just want to note that I think the right to hold public office, either by election or appointment, is, is one of valuable rights of citizenship. And I think that restrictions on First Amendment rights of elected officials is likely subject to a more stringent review than, than that of non-elected citizens. And so I think that there certainly is a case, a U.S. Supreme Court case, it stands for the idea that, and I'll just quote here, "The manifest function of the First Amendment and the representative government requires that legislators be given the widest latitude to express their views on issues of policy." And just reading a public law group's kind of thoughts on this, the recommendation that sticks out at me is be extremely cautious in considering restricting free speech rights of a council member. So I just put that on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. And Mr. Gates? Would you like to respond? I know you had indicated you wanted to remain in the queue.
I don't think I was in the queue, but since you've invited me, I would just say a short word that the part I agree with, with Mr. Burke, is this should be, we should be extremely cautious anytime over limiting speech. And I think that the chair has been extremely cautious here. I would also add that this chair ruling has been appealed. It's been appealed to the body. So what happens next is the body votes on this ruling. It doesn't become the chair's ruling anymore. This becomes a ruling of the body, where in parliamentary law, which often gets deference from the courts, this parliamentary ruling is made by a majority, and it's only applicable to 11 people, I'm sorry, 12 people in the room here.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. I'll go ahead and continue through the queue. Ms. Allard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just wanted to respond to my fellow assembly member from downtown. The question was posed to me on social media, "Do we know when the vote will take place?" My response, and I quote, "Was hopefully after everyone has testified." And I'd also like to add that my due diligence of asking community members questions has never wavered. Ever since I've sat on this body since day one, my pattern has always been to have community involvement and ask questions regardless if I agree or disagree. The other part I would like to point out is that you had stated that each, each community member will have three minutes to speak, but not be able to have questions asked to them. You have just told every single person in the community, you no longer matter because you are not going to be asked any questions. I would also like to point out to this body that we had, not, but last year, I believe, individuals rolling around in front of the dais, and when brought up to the chair before, nothing was done, and it was distracting and annoying. But because it fit a particular political agenda, it was allowed to happen. I will also go on to say that we have had A.O. 37, A.O. 65, and A.O. 66, where public testimony was not shut down as long as it was following this body's political agenda, the majority. My final question would be, to you, Madam Chair, who defines dilatory, and how will that standard be applied?
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Dilatory, I have take, as I have read from Roberts' Rules, refers to, and you can, you can go back to that section if you want. I can reread it. I got it. What makes something dilatory? Page 342 of the 11th Edition of Roberts' Rules defines a dilatory motion as, quote, "A motion is dilatory if it seeks to obstruct or thwart the will of the assembly as clearly indicated by the existing parliamentary situation," end quote. This same page talks about, quote, "As further examples, it is dilatory to obstruct business by appealing from a ruling of the chair on a question about which there cannot possibly be two reasonable opinions, by demanding a division of on a vote, even when there has been a full vote on the result as clear, by moving to lay on the table the matter for which a special meeting has been called, by constantly raising points of order and appealing from the chair's decision on them, or by moving to adjourn again and again when nothing has happened to justify renewal of such a motion. By use of such tactics, a minority of two or three members could bring business to a standstill," end quote. Last, page 342 of the 11th Edition of Roberts' Rules does state that, quote, "It is the duty of the presiding officer to prevent members from misusing the legitimate forms of motions or abusing the privilege of renewing certain motions merely to obstruct business," end quote. That is the reference.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I ask you a follow-up question, please?
Go ahead, and then I need to move through the queue.
So I would go back to state that when I am asking questions, I'm not doing a point of order on myself. It's the other members of the body. So where does questioning individuals that are testifying have anything to do with dilatory?
No, I've already answered this question, and it concerns the use of procedures, because, again, as I noted, what, whatever is not set in code goes through Roberts' Rules. Roberts' Rules doesn't specifically address public hearings. It addresses it differently through the point, the areas I've cited. So use of those parliamentary forums to keep the public from speaking, and this is what this is all about. It's, it's to keep, it's to ensure we can hear from as many people as possible. I have said this repeatedly. The assembly is, is a limited public forum. It allows for time, place, and manner restrictions. It's not an open public meeting, and we have a structure for public hearing. We want to hear from people, and we're not, we're not moving very quickly, and we need to move it along.
Madam Chair, can I just ask you one last question, please?
I'm going to need to come back to you, Ms. Allard, because we have other folks in the queue. Ms. Kennedy, you've already been in the queue twice. Let me go to Ms. Zalatell, who has not spoken yet. Ms. Zalatell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to urge my colleagues to uphold the ruling of the chair. This is a narrowly tailored response that allows us to do exactly what we're supposed to be doing during this time, which is hear from the public, and providing a way to still get questions answered with some pre-scheduled breaks. I applaud and thank the chair for her careful consideration of our need to get this business done, but also being able to do so in a thoughtful manner. So again, I urge that we uphold the ruling of the chair, and we move forward so that we can hear from folks this evening. Thank you.
Madam Chair, point of information.
Mr. Mayor, what is your question about procedure?
Yes, Madam Chair, does the chair know the difference between a question and a motion? What you just read, limited motions as dilatory. It says nothing to the, to the fact of questions being dilatory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The chair does, in fact, know the difference between the two. And as Mr. Gates has indicated, this application of dilatory is relevant here. We will now move through the queue to Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually made this motion to challenge the ruling of the chair, because as a minority member from another town in this municipality, I am already at a disadvantage, both me and my colleague in District 2. And so I just felt like this was another way to further marginalize the representation from, at least from my community, as well as those that are supporting what probably everybody knows I am already supporting. So I just want to make the statement that even though I know that, well, I can pretty much tell how this vote will probably go, I just want to basically make the objection that I do believe it is out of, it is a bad ruling by the chair, because I do believe that it further discriminates against minority, the minority voice on this body. And Roberts' Rules should actually be there to protect the minority body. So anyway, I will just register my objection in that way, and we'll see how the vote goes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Dunbar?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would also urge my colleagues to uphold the ruling of the chair. A few points here. On the dilatory point, in Roberts' Rules of Order, I believe that is exemplary, but not an exhaustive list. There are a number of, of other actions that a member could take that we could, that we can envision that would delay the action of the body. Second, on the First Amendment issue, the, I believe, and Mr. Burke can correct me if I'm wrong, but it's Bond versus Floyd is the first, is the case that is being referred to, where they speak about the manifest rights of elected officials to have First Amendment rights. That involved ceding a, ceding an elected official to an elected body because they held a particular political view. And I think that is very different... And I think that is very different from the kind of rules of procedure that we're talking about here. You can think to other elected bodies, like the U.S. House of Representatives or the State House and the strict rules they have around debate. Sometimes they're even limited at the federal level to how much time each member has to debate a particular topic. This in no way impinges upon any Assembly member's right to take a political position, to state it during debate, to propose a motion to be seated here or anything along those lines. And the last thing I'll say is, you know, this is an institution that has for, I think, as long as almost anyone can remember, and those of us who've spoken with someone like Dick Trainey, for example, former chair. This is an institution that used to rule, does run on norms, not strict rules. And unfortunately, we've seen a number of those norms break down in the last year and a half. One of them is people cheering and clapping. And unfortunately, we have been unable to maintain that norm in this, in this chamber. And because of that, there is an unusual circumstance right now where it is very difficult to get through public testimony and hear the people that we want to hear from. So again, I think this is a narrowly tailored ruling of the chair for the internal conduct of our body that does not impinge upon elected members First Amendment rights and frankly is necessary so that we, as a body, can move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I call the question.
Is there a second to the motion to call the question?
Second.
Moved by Mr. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Perez Verdia. This is not a debatable motion. It requires a, it requires eight votes to pass. Members may proceed to vote on the motion to call the question.
Mr. Peterson, on the motion to call the question?
Yes.
Mr. Constant?
Yes.
Ms. Zalatell?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Yes.
The motion to call the question passes 10 to 1.
Madam Chair, point of information.
Mr. Mayor, what is your procedural question?
Yes, Madam Chair. I guess we're now going by norms and not rules, according to Mr. Dunbar. Is there a list of these norms? Because we thought we were going by rules and now we're going by norms. I just want clarification. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would point you to the Charter, the Code, Robert's Rules, and the municipal attorney. Thank you.
I'm asking for a ruling by the municipal attorney on what is a norm and what is a rule?
This is not a discussion, sir.
Actually, it is. Okay, this is a point of information.
The question has been called.
The question has been called, sir.
Oh, I'm not debating what you voted on. It's what I'm trying to catch up to is what is a norm versus a rule? And you said that the county attorney made that determination. I didn't hear that. I would like to know what a norm is and what a rule is. I understand the rules, just not the norms.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are numerous resources available. Some of us have found that watching recordings of previous meetings is helpful to get a sense of norms. This, I am not going to have this discussion here. I recognize your point of information. I have responded. You have a legal team. You have access to the Assembly attorney as well.
I'm asking for that decision at this time.
The question has been called.
The question has been called. We will proceed to vote on the motion before us. The motion is to appeal the ruling of the chair. A no vote means that questions from Assembly members and the mayor will not be entertained to members of the public testifying during the public hearing for AO 2021-91. Members may proceed to vote.
Madam Chair, I'd like to do it.
Madam Chair, point of information.
Mr. Peterson?
I'm sorry, point of information.
Mr. Perez Verdia, once the vote has been called?
I want to make sure we're voting on the right thing. I thought we were voting on calling the question.
No, you already voted.
That's passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let me go ahead and restate then. We are, the main motion before us, as moved by Ms. Kennedy and seconded by Ms. Allard, is a vote to overrule or challenge the ruling of the chair. My ruling is that questions from Assembly members and the mayor specifically for this public hearing only to members of the public will not be entertained. If members agree with my ruling, then voting no supports my ruling. If you support the motion to challenge my ruling as brought forth by Ms. Kennedy, then you would vote yes.
Madam Chair, can I do a point of personal privilege, please?
No.
Mr. Peterson, on the question to overrule, on the question of to challenge the ruling of the chair, how do you vote?
No.
Mr. Constant?
No.
Ms. Zalatell?
No.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
No.
The motion fails 3 to 8. We will now move to public testimony on AO 2021-91. I ask the members of the public to refrain from shouting. Okay. Security, the gentleman in the blue shirt, 1, 2, 3, 4th row. Sir, you have been warned. Security, please note. A warning has been issued. If it occurs again, then a member of the public will be asked to leave. Thank you. We will now resume public testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. You will have three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Svea Harvey. I live in District 6. My experience with COVID-19 has been masks in school, rude people, and harder times. My goal in coming here tonight is to encourage you all to make it so I don't have to wear, wear a mask in school.
Madam Chair, point of information. Ms. Allard, what is your procedural question?
My procedural question is how long is an individual allowed to testify and stand in front of the podium before the clock stops?
Thank you, Ms. Allard. That depends on the situation. As you can see, the clock was stopped.
Well, this won't take a full three minutes, so I'll finish on her behalf, see where she left off.
Actually.
I would like to make masks to be optional everywhere. When my family got COVID, we were quarantined and we followed all the rules. But now you're trying to make even more rules to follow. I'm not only speaking for myself, but for the voices of other children. In my school, somebody fainted from her mask. When the teachers got to her and attempted to remove her mask, she was screaming, scared that she might get COVID. And just, and that just makes me scared to wear a mask. I did not want to wear a mask. I don't, I did not want masks to become popular. They are hard to breathe in and bad for our health. 1 Corinthians 13:4 through 9. Love is patient, love is kind. Love does not envy or boast. It is not proud, it is not rude. It is not self-seeking, is not irritable, and does not keep a record of wrongs. Love finds no joy in unrighteousness, but rejoices in the truth. It bears all things, believes all things, hopes all things, endures all things. Love never ends. John 3:16. For God so loved the world that he sent his only Son, that whoever believes in him will not perish, but have eternal life. My hope is our community will learn to love each other once again. Mayor Bronson came to help the people, not to ignore them. He has my support. It's on behalf of my daughter, and I'll be taking my three minutes shortly.
Sir? Are you coming back to?
No, I'll be here on my own time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Welcome. Please come forward. Or actually, Ms. Allard, are you in the queue for a point of order or a point of information?
No, I'm, my free speech has been taken from me. Thank you, though.
Mr. Burke? Mr. Burke? You had put yourself in the queue for a?
Through the chair. I apologize. That was before it was called the question.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. You have minutes.
My name is Katie Gibson. I live in District 5, and I'm super nervous. My mom is Jan Henning. She's 81 years old and lives in District 4. She doesn't have the stamina to be here in person. We both are opposed to AO 2021-91. To begin, on page 3 of the proposed ordinance, line 3 recognizes the management authority over municipal buildings is vested in the executive branch. I urge this body to continue to recognize the mayor's authority according to Municipal Code 25.20.050. Secondly, and also on page 2, line 47, our mayor is attempting to defend constitutional rights against the overreaching vaccine mandate issued by the Biden administration. Thank you, Mayor Bronson. On the other hand, my husband works for a company that has federal contracts. He is now faced with a decision. Take the shot, request an exemption, or possibly be fired from a company that he has worked for for 24 years. I'm the mom of three children. My 28-year-old daughter loves her freedom and, and she opposes this proposed ordinance. My athletic 13-year-old son is very opposed to wearing a mask. Tonight, his first night back at flag football at the Dome since this COVID mayhem began, and he is excited. While I see in version S, there is an exemption to athletes. It states for indoor sports, masks will be worn on the sidelines. Wait, they can be on the field with no mask, but then have to put the mask on the sidelines? Why? Lastly, my adopted five-year-old son with special needs is especially opposed to wearing a mask. Well, I understand that he would be exempt. I would like to point out that ASD mask policy has affected our family. Last summer, I worked with ASD Early Intervention and got an IEP. My son has ADHD and extreme separation anxiety. He also drools. When I, when I asked how we were going to get my son to adjusted to the new school, the new teacher, the new special ed team, I was told they couldn't scaffold that at the time. Parents weren't allowed in the school or even out of their cars. As a result, we decided to put him in kindergarten in a private school where mask-wearing is a choice. The staff and teachers are amazing. My son is well-adjusted and is excelling, praise God. I do not see, foresee sending him to ASD in a mask. Due to the federal mask mandates, my five-year-old son and I missed out on family vacation in January 2021. Next week, we're going to miss another significant family event. My boy's great-grandmother turns 100 in Kansas City. My five-year-old son and I can't endure the mask for duration of the flight, so we'll be staying home. My son wants to ride the People Mover. Sorry, son, they require a mask. My son wants to fly. Sorry, son, they require a mask. My son wants to ride the train. Sorry, son, they require a mask. Please vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Thank you.
I'm Scott Stansbury in District 5. Like each of you, I've served my local community for 25 years as a volunteer fire department in Texas. I've logged over 5,000 ambulance runs as a league medic. During that time, I've had a loaded gun to my neck, knife thrust at me, baseball bat swung at me, but yet the virus does not scare me. Have any of you ever been with someone that was a rape victim, COPD, asthma, PTSD, autism, or others? I have, and it's devastating to them what this ordinance will do. It can be said that past mandates related to COVID have led to increased suicide rates due to loss of jobs, children unable to go to school, loss of social interaction, and increased drug abuse. For 35 years, I was a consultant in the engineering field as an OSHA expert in risk assessment, audits, and PPE. People are getting the virus because of touching contaminated surface and touching their mask in face, thus giving the virus to themselves. It is OSHA that sets the standards on masks, not doctors. It is doctors and nurses who must follow these rules. OSHA and IOH are the ones that conduct the scientific research and have 30 years of research found on their website. I did a presentation to the State Senate Judiciary Committee in Juneau on masks and the science behind them. In the OSHA regulations, it states in bold print that a mask and surgical mask will not protect you from a virus. I have two housemates that did get the virus. I, however, did not, nor did I ever wear a mask around them. When you look at the statistics of when masks were enacted in the U.S., infection rates increased in every single case. Let it be known that I have respect to each of you sitting up there. I do not agree with the political games being played. These games are not hurting you, but are hurting the people of Anchorage. I ask that you please put your pride aside, stop the games, and work together as a team for the people. In closing, if the protected need to be protected from the unprotected, then why is the protected needing protection that does not protect the protected? Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gina. I live in South Anchorage. I'm an organ transplant, but I've been a resident for 28 years. I'm here to testify today for the freedom of choice. I don't support mandating masks. I believe most citizens comply when asked to mask up when necessary and should continue to have the choice. I have two boys. One, older son attending college in mask-free Arizona, where he attends a public event and has the choice to mask or unmask. He loves his freedom. My younger son attends a local high school, requires mandatory mask. He's stopped every morning, each interest entering, and has to be masked up. The teachers remind him throughout his seven hours to wear a mask properly. I'm still receiving notifications for his exposure to COVID cases, but not to stay home. He can keep going to school until he's showing some symptoms. Also, as a business owner, I have no legal stance. I'm not a doctor, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know how each individual reacts to the vaccination or masking up. I give each one of my employees the freedom to choose. It's not my choice, it's theirs, and so they get to choose. In the past year and a half, I have 25 employees. I've had two tests positive for the case and had mild symptoms, and we're back to work quickly. I just don't find it necessary to mandate, as this would affect my business in a negative manner. Our equipment operators, truck drivers, office admin, mechanics need to be able to breathe freely. Okay? Unfortunately, I have had to bury both my parents. One, my dad was an officer killed in the line of duty by a drunk driver. Yet alcohol is still a choice. Alcohol-related deaths happen every 50 minutes, and citizens continue to get in their cars and drink and drive. The virus will go away. Drinking and driving doesn't. I also buried my mom, best friend, and the founder of one of the largest nonprofit homeless shelters in Portland, Oregon, called the Father's Heart Street Ministry. Four and a half years ago, she lost her six-day battle to the flu. Complications of the flu, not COVID. This is four and a half years ago, along with 81,000 other people the same year. We have had the freedom to always choose vaccination. We have had the freedom to always choose vaccination, but it doesn't always save lives. You see, we all have freedoms to choose, and they might, I might not agree with the choices of my neighbors, friends, families, colleagues, but we still have a choice, and I still love them in the end. It is not the government's place to tell us how to choose to live our lives. As an elected official and leaders, you are to evaluate situations on a neutral ground. Many of you are making personal decisions based on your personal views. You should not be in office. You should be more open-minded and sometimes agree to disagree. I have not-
Thank you for your testimony.
And will not let the virus control me. I have not missed a day of work, I have missed a-
Your time is up? Thank you for your testimony. Please come forward, state your name for the record, sir, and the area of town in which you live, you have to press the button to turn the microphone on there. Thank you.
My name's Trevor Two, I'm from South Anchorage, District 6. This is the first time I've been down here, this is an absolute clown show up there. If you guys are going to change the rules at a game halfway through because you're starting to lose, why don't you just change it and put bags over all of our faces and throw us in prison? Change the rules. Here's my, my speech, what I came down here for after seeing this nonsense. The overall survival rate of COVID is 99%, right around there, we all know that, you know that, everyone up there knows that. With these terrifying numbers, I'd like to thank everyone here tonight for risking your lives to be here. Great job, you guys. I moved here with my family in 1977 when I was five years old, okay? I went to Clark East and I graduated from UAA. I'm disgusted with this assembly and what they've done to my hometown. You guys should all be ashamed of yourselves. I don't know how you sleep at night, I really don't. I don't know if your family's embarrassed, it's, it's, it's horrible. I could stand up here all night and spit facts, stats, logic, numbers that you guys have all heard, but it's just going to fall on deaf ears because this is political 100%, and has nothing to do with health at this point. Okay? So what I'm going to do is I'm going to come up with a little bit different approach. I'm going to talk about a real-world approach. I'm assuming most of you that have voted for these mandates don't watch football, it's just a hunch. But there's, there's, for the past six weeks, 80,000 to 100,000 people packed into football stadiums, no masks, shoulder to shoulder, screaming and yelling for their teams. There are not increase in cases, there's not body bags piled up on the streets outside the hospital, there never has been. So, I'm, I'm curious what planet these games are going on, if this is a different virus they're dealing with than here in Anchorage, Alaska? But while that's all going on, we've had a decrease in cases by 28% in the last two weeks, that you guys are still just doubling down on this crap. This is nonsense, okay? I haven't worn a mask in a year and a half. I haven't worn it in a store, not in a restaurant. A little bit of harassment, quick two words to those people, send them on their way. Couple of managers have asked me to take it off or I can't shop, I said call APD. You know what they did? Nothing. I kept shopping, checked out, took my groceries, and went home. So that's where I've been on this. We've seen countless politicians at their elitist events without masks, okay? That pretty much deems this nothing. I'm going to skip through here. So what I'm, what I'm here to do is I want to address everybody out there who's in this room, who's watching on TV, who's watching on their computer, that might feel the way I feel, but they're afraid because of the kickback they're going to get from neighbors, family, and friends because of the division. This circus, this clown show is over, okay? It's over. Do what you want, take a mask off, put it on, but do not comply with these mandates if they vote this thing through. It's time to stand up for yourselves, stand up for this country, and stop listening to these tyrants. And to the assembly members voting these atrocious mandates that are ruining my hometown, you're irrelevant to me. Irrelevant, I do not listen to anything you say. My body, my rights, I will not comply.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome.
Madam Chair, I have a point of information.
What is your procedural question?
Is my free speech being infringed on?
Ms. Allard, that is not a relevant procedural question.
Madam Chair? It's a simple yes or no.
No. Good, welcome, please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live.
My name is Stephanie Taylor, and I am a campaign, I'm a candidate for Anchorage Assembly for District 5. Masks are always presented as a benign and indisputable intervention, but that is not true. We will never stop a microscopic virus by controlling people. If we could, COVID would already be a thing of the past. If masks work, why don't they work? If masks are such an effective way to stop the spread of COVID, why aren't the sponsors of this ordinance present to hear public testimony in person? If what they are advocating is true, then their masks should protect them. My frustration with these types of proposals rests in the fact that many people perceive wearing a mask as a minimal and harmless request. The reality is masks can cause significant harms, as we have heard over and over during this public testimony. The mantra that people spout, "If you can't wear a mask, stay at home," is on par with "Send the homeless to Fire Island." Both are unkind, impractical, and mean-spirited. There are more effective and less divisive approaches to dealing with COVID, but the powers that be are unwilling to consider or promote them. The charter established the separation of powers for, for specific reasons. You swore an oath to support and defend it. It is irresponsible and reckless to alter the charter to seize control from our duly elected, duly-elected mayor simply because you disagree with his approach. There are countless other cities, states, and countries that have successfully managed COVID without mandates or laws to this effect. So we know that it can be done. You seem determined to force the public to wear masks because you will not tolerate individuals making their own health decisions. These types of actions have a vindictive and punitive undertone. It is unbelievably sad how much division has been sown in our country and community because of the responses to COVID. Much of it is due to the censorship of opposing data. Imagine a court hearing where only one side is permitted to present their case. There would be no justice, there would be no fair outcomes. That is what we are experiencing now. Information is labeled misinformation or disinformation if it presents data and evidence that don't support the popular narrative. It is interesting to note that the censored material is not labeled false or untrue, because it isn't. It is being censored because the popular narratives on COVID cannot withstand any real scrutiny or debate. I oppose AO 2021-91 with or without amendments. This ordinance is not about the health and safety of our community. It is about power, pure and simple. Please vote against it, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Please come forth. Ma'am, would you pull the microphone? We are taking a break. We are taking a break for 10 minutes.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair? Madam Chair, point of information.
Mr. Perez Verdia, what is your procedural question?
My procedural question is, well, well, I guess my, my request is to take a pause because I would like to address what just happened and, and, and talk about how we want to address it.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Verdia, we will take a 10-minute pause.
Thank you.
If members would please take their seats, we're going to get started here in a minute. If Assembly members would please take their seats. Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to do a check to make sure we still have members on the phone. Mr. Peterson, are you on the line?
I'm here.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mr. Constant, are you on the line?
Here.
Ms. Zalatell?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson, are you on the line?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Quinn-Davidson. Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll go ahead and resume. First, I want to apologize to the gentleman who I think was in the third or fourth row in the blue shirt, who I thought had shouted, and apparently it was not him. It's hard, it is hard to see. That's why I have assistance up here in identifying folks. I also want to note, the Assembly has a COVID-19 mitigation plan. We just saw the administration thwart the plan by removing the plexiglass on their own initiative. This is a separation of powers issue. The plexiglass, the plexiglass isn't just for elected officials and members of the public, but for staff who are required to be here. This action is out of order and disrespectful. However, we are here to conduct a public hearing and listen to members of the public. I've also learned that the administration has removed the security contractor from the Assembly chambers. It is my intent to continue the public hearing in a safe and orderly manner. We want to hear from as many members of the public as we can. So we'll go ahead and continue the public hearing. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live.
Madam Chair, point of inform, uh, point of order, please.
Ms. Allard, what rule do you believe has been broken?
Um, maybe it's more of a point of information, so let me correct myself. Are we not taking telephonic testimony tonight?
Thank you, Ms. Allard. That is correct. We are not taking telephonic testimony because this is a continued public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome. Sir, please, please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live.
I am Lee Sloan, District 5, and I've been an Alaska resident for 12 years, Anchorage resident for eight years. I grew up in California where recently Governor Newsom attempted to exert similar measures of control over California residents. The restrictions remove the rights of people to gather indoors peaceably, particularly in houses of worship, as they so chose. A group of churches came together to challenge the constitutionality of these measures. In February 2021, the Supreme Court awarded $1.35 million to the churches led by Pastor Che On. Freedom-loving Americans, and especially Alaskans, will not stand for this intrusive Newsom-esque treatment. We are independent and did not put you in office to make our daily decisions for us. Your proposed ordinance would trickle down to create a myriad of problems. Think of the businesses who will struggle, the churches to be muzzled, the mental health issues, and suicides to come. You are turning business owners against their customers, bosses against employees, community members against one another. All references to the vaccinated or unvaccinated should also be removed from this ordinance. Many of us Anchorage residents refuse to let anyone divide us and cause us to discriminate against one another based on a mere vaccine status. There are some people who think that masks are important. Others think that masks are either ineffective or harmful. There is only one side that is trying to impose their will on others. If we err, let's err on the side of liberty. Anchorage residents sent a clear message on the new direction they'd like us to head with regard to COVID-19 mandates and restrictions. We elected David Bronson to preserve our choice. If you think of nothing else, think of yourselves and the possible lawsuits that could ensue. We are America. We are Alaska. We are free. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Thank you.
My name is Jordan Griffiths. I am in District 4. And just what I want to say is that I honestly have no idea why we have masks now. This COVID pandemic thing is horrible on us students. Us students, you, what I mean by that is I have classes on both the upstairs and downstairs. I have to run up the stairs. I cannot breathe in my mask. When I have my mask on and I have to run up my stairs, I'm sitting there in my classroom, literally hyperventilating because I am not able to breathe. The thing I don't understand is when... I have asked a few kids my age how they like these mask mandates and what they want to do about it. I have some who say they don't mind. I also have others who say they completely hate them. I personally don't want the mask mandate because, like, as I said, it's hard to breathe in. Another thing I would like to bring up is that it's just really annoying that we have our teachers who are directing us to put our masks on correctly more than they actually teach the own class. Like, I have a social studies teacher who talks more about COVID and how their friend is in the ICU more than they talk about us and how we're supposed to learn about our history and what history, like, what history we need to learn. It's, there's so much backlash at my school. The kids are scared to stand up for themselves. Other kids in different entire classes have to stand up for our special needs, like, our classes. I don't, I don't understand why it's hard to understand that us, like, us students don't get the help we need. We've all fallen behind. I don't... If we had a little more help, maybe it would work out. Maybe. It's on a 50/50 if it would work out or it wouldn't. If it did work out, great. We have masks. It's one thing that helps us go to school. If it didn't work out, I would hope that you guys might be able to take the mask mandate so that we can all breathe.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please come forward, ma'am. State, oh, state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live.
My name is Shirley Nelson, and I want to first of all say that I'm, I guess I would say I'm pleased that one of my representatives deemed it, I don't know, appropriate, that he might come and look us all straight in the face this night, Mr. Rivera. However, my testimony, I really can't have confidence that you're listening or you care about what I have to say. You, you, your office, whoever is in your office, I have sent numerous, numerous emails, left voice messages over the last two months, and not just on the COVID issue, but other issues regarding the city. And I have never, to this day, received a response. Also, Ms. Zalatell, thank you for not being here to represent me tonight. I find it very unsettling that I can come here to represent myself and you don't feel the need to come here and represent me. And now, let's talk about COVID. You know, you know that, that, that virus that's just a cold? I know you've all heard the 98, you know, all the statistics that apply to it. And Mr. Dunbar, could you please pay attention? Thank you. Yeah. And, you know, I've watched this whole, this whole clown show over the days, and I'm just totally amazed at how the representatives on this dais have such little disregard for their constituents. I, I'm just amazed. I, I'm just flabbergasted. I'm floored that none of you seem to really care. You've all got your own little agendas that you're pushing, but you don't care about the rest of the constituents, the whole city. We're all affected by this. One of the main things, and I know you guys haven't, I mean, now that we don't have a mask, but, oh, wait, we have to follow the lower 48, I am not able to go to my husband's chemotherapy treatments. I'm not allowed in the room, even with a mask. So if you pass this ordinance, it's only going to get worse. You have pitted the entire city against each other. And under division by everyone, nothing good happens or comes of it. I'm not going to tell on my neighbor, and I, maybe my neighbor wants to tell on me. That's fine. I don't really care. But that's their choice, and I get to make my choices because I am a United States citizen, and I follow the Constitution, and I have the freedom. And Ms. Allard, I have six seconds. Ask me a question because they said you couldn't, you know, outside of the three minutes.
Thank you for your testimony. Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you for your testimony.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say something, and I'm gonna say it really loud.
No, it doesn't, ma'am, it doesn't work that way.
I still do not understand how you have...
Ma'am? You are warned. This is a warning. You need to... Ma'am, if you, if you do not stop, ma'am, you, you, if you do not stop, you will be removed. You need to step away from the podium. You have been warned. Please step away from the podium. Okay. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Thank you. Oh, make sure that's on. Thank you, Mr. Haberman.
My name is Christine Google, and I live in the Peters Creek-Chugiak area. I've been an Alaskan resident for 51 years. I'm a registered nurse, and all of you received individual emails from me months ago when the threat of masks was only a mandate and not threatening to be imposed on us as a law. You heard all of my careful discussion with you, my attempt to inform you about the very erroneous application, or misinterpretation, actually, of true science regarding the masks. The masks are actually like trying to catch a flea with a hurricane fence. COVID is too small, and I'm sure you've heard those things. But I'm wanting to be here to respond to all three of the ordinances because I see that there is a thread woven through them. They are all connected, and 92 may even prove to be more dangerous than 91.
Madam Chair, point of information.
This nation, I want to start with this.
Ma'am, I need to pause your testimony. A member has raised a point of information. Ms. Allard, what is your procedural question?
My procedural question is if we have other items that can be testified on at later dates, individuals can pause that and testify on those at different times than all at once. Is that correct?
I, I see them hooked together, but I am talking about 91.
Hold on, ma'am. I've got your time. Pause. Ms. Allard, if I understand your question correctly, while I have asked folks or suggested that it's most helpful to Assembly members when they speak directly to the ordinance, members of the public, to speak directly to the ordinance for which the hearing is being held, it's true, they can speak honestly to whatever. If they want to speak to those other two during that, I mean, we don't have, I don't have the ability to stop that, if that is your question. We will have additional public hearings individually for those other items. The public hearings for those two other items on the agenda have not yet been opened. When they are opened, there will be time for members of the public to speak three minutes each on those.
Madam Chair, can I go ahead and just ask you a follow-up question, please?
Uh, yes, a follow-up procedural question.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that any individual that might mention any other item numbers, it's not going to be used against them, that they can't testify on those items at a later date.
No, because the, the public hearings for those two items have not been opened, so...
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Allard.
I can clarify that confusion because there is an item specifically mentioned in 91 and 91S that is also in 92.
Understood. We have three, just for folks in the audience, we've got three items on there. So I'm gonna restart your clock, and in the event that I screwed up, I'm gonna put it for two minutes, so bear with me here.
Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. This nation, actually, in a U.S. Supreme Court 1964 case, New York Times versus Sullivan, constitutional case law states, the U.S. Supreme Court stated this, and I quote, "This nation is founded on the profound national commitment to the principle that debate on public issues shall be uninhibited, robust, and wide open, and that it may well include vehement, caustic, and sometimes unpleasantly sharp attacks on government and public officials," end quote. This is constitutional case law that still stands, and by the ordinance, parenthetically emphasized, in the amendments to be orders, you would be violating this constitutional court precedent. You have included tucked inside seemingly pallid and reasonable sounding verbiage in 91, and I would say it's in the others as well, ordinances that would allow you as an assembly to completely deny future public protest about measures such as these you know want to pass, deny the right of access to the premises, and that's the one that's in 91, that we taxpayers pay for and constrict the legal and governmentally defined authority of the mayor to effect his elected role of protecting us as his citizens. Further, ordinance 91 creates enemies out of neighbors and enemies out of employers. We all have the First Amendment right to protest and have our protestations heard when we in numbers disagree with the opinions and efforts of this or any future assembly.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome, sir. Please come forward and state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Thank you.
My name is Jerry Google. That was my wife that just spoke. I have never, I've never used the race card, but I just, for the record, I just want this assembly to know that my mom is, is about five-foot Alute lady from Kodiak, actually a village called Uzinki. Anyway, I'm a commercial fisherman, and as far as this, what's going on in our world today... today, as a fisherman, I'm not sure you guys are aware, but you know, the Coast Guard for a moment was going to pass a mandate there that every one of us on the boat had to be wearing a mask all the time. And if you can imagine Bristol Bay where you're working in approximately a 10 by 10 box, that would be pretty unreasonable to be, have a Coast Gardener come alongside and say, "We gotta cite you. You're, you're not compliant." I want to quickly mention that I hope most of you are aware of what's been happening in Australia. How horrid to think that two people sunning themselves on the beach be carried away in handcuffs. That's where this thing's going. Now, what, what I want to share though is, this is where I really want to go. As this has been going on, madam, I acknowledge you, I should have started that way. But anyways, this has been going on, one of the things I've done is, for instance, Fred Meyer, I walk through Fred Meyer and I'll look and I'll see somebody without a mask and I'll scoot up alongside and I'll say, "Hey, you're not wearing a mask." Most of the time they'll be defensive for a moment. I say, "No, no, 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 I'm not wearing a mask either." But you know what would come of it is I would then ask another question. Are you a Christian? You know what? What I found is most of those people that weren't wearing a mask, many of them weren't Christians. I believe that God, that established our Constitution with our founding fathers, I believe that same God is speaking to us. He's speaking to us. And I just want to testify before this group right now that, hey, this issue isn't about the masks. It's not about the masks. This is a question between good and evil. This is an issue. This is an issue between demagogues and freedom and life given to us by our founding father.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christine Hill. And you say you want to hear everyone? Baloney! You're not allowing phone testimony tonight and you're not allowing for clarification questions from people. It's nerve wracking to get up here. It still is for me too. And we may not be able to make our point and with questions, they can be, they can be answered. And I beseech all of Anchorage to please that are watching on the video, come and testify. Let's push this back until April and the reelection. Push it back. As long as we have testimony, they can't vote. And I'm glad to learn tonight that I can actually testify on the other two ordinances that are going to be put before us because we'll push this back and you'll never be able to vote on it. You have taken Jamie Allard and dear Crystal Kennedy and our mayor out of sync. They should be, anybody should be able to be engaged and actually bring forth questions and things that they're concerned about. And I must say, you know, I really don't have any profound testimony tonight. There have been so many moving testimonies by so many various peoples with, that, on both sides, but mostly the ones that do not want to have this ordinance passed. They are, the people that have been testifying are the true heroes of Anchorage, Alaska. They are wonderful. They've come forward and shared some very intimate things of their life and I really appreciate it very, very much. Also, don't forget to vote yes on Raquel Zalatell. You are oppressing, you are oppressing the people here. You do not allow them to clap. It has actually been lifted a little bit. People need to be able to express themselves in an orderly fashion, which I have actually witnessed. So I thank you for allowing that and kind of going over that. But you are oppressing our people, the people of Anchorage. You're infuriating them. You haven't seen nothing yet. We're gonna press on, we're not giving up. And there's more and more that are gathering. Do not take our freedoms away from us. Hate, hate. I no longer hate people. I do hate. I hate usernames and passwords. Maybe I'll never get over it. I don't know if there's a kind of a group that I can go do to get over that. But I do not hate people. My father, I hated. He was a child molester. I've gotten over that. I don't hate him. He's deceased. I do not hate people. I urge anybody who has hate in their heart for people to let that go. We all belong to the human race. We are all one. So fair and equity, niceness, kindness? Baloney, macaroni. You have, Jamie Allard one night asked for somebody who's testified their name. You would not allow her to do so. You asked her to get it from the clerk. Two other Assembly persons you, you took and stopped. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Please come forward and state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Thank you.
You just said the same to all them, right?
Yep.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Melissa Bell and I'm a community member of District Six. I am a small business owner and a mom of three. Although I work, our kids are homeschooled this year due to mask mandates on school property. After watching my kids wear a mask, I see they are constantly contaminating their healthy bodies by breathing unsanitary wet cloth against their nose and mouths. Not all residents can afford the luxury of private school. At these schools, parents are given the option of choice, the choice whether or not to mask or unmask their children. These private schools have run since the beginning of COVID with minimal disruption successfully. Why don't we hear or see articles on these success stories? I watch groups of Anchorage residents come into restaurants wearing a mask and then once at the table, remove the mask and go on breathing normal for the next hour and a half in an open room among groups of people they don't know. At the end of the dinner, they take their mask that was just set on that public table, probably not properly sanitized, and then put it on their face and walk out. How does this make any sense? It is an action that people are adhering to that they think will make them safer when in all actuality it does not. I make these points because the majority of people aren't properly sanitizing, are potentially causing more harm than good, and are definitely not using the proper mask to help stop spread, spread COVID-19. To mask or not mask should be our choice. The good news is now without the mask mandates, our numbers are starting to decline. I believe the only way to get past this is through it. You can't outrun a virus. Most likely, a very large portion of our community already has the antibodies and this is a blessing. We should be testing for this. You have to ask yourselves, why are we not? I feel lucky. My kid showed antibodies in a blood test that I went and paid for. We are forcing our friends, families, and fellow Americans to adhere to a one-sided view. Why is so much of what we are seeing in the public eye in Anchorage all about fear and hate? In most age brackets, COVID-19 still has a 99% survival rate. Most diseases, cancers, and comorbidities, the comorbidities themselves do not have this survivability rate. These are the numbers we should focus on. Proper early treatment, a healthy lifestyle, vitamins, and supplements should have been the assembly's focus the past year and a half. Instead, we have expensive campaigns to push vaccines, masks, and mandates, and our numbers are higher than they were a year ago prior to the vaccine and the knowledge of what this man-made virus is. On a positive note, Pfizer Merck has now come out with the magic antiviral pill coming out soon to save the world. Do you know what they are testing the efficacy of? Ivermectin. And they've changed the name. You can research that. This is not about saving lives. It's about money. We teach our children and we are taught to ask questions and science compels us to ask questions, to search for truth, and right now it's unclear what the truth is. This assembly shouldn't be forcing their version of the truth. This is a country and state where we are privileged enough to be able to make that decision on our own for our families, our friends, and our businesses. I strongly oppose this ordinance as well as the other two up there. So thank you for your time. Oh, and the norm has changed in the last year and a half because we've been woken up in these meetings.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live.
Hi. Thank you for letting me speak today. My name is Diane and I'm from District Six. I'm born and raised in Alaska, a mother of three and a preschool teacher. I'm here today to speak against the mask mandate. Mandating mask wearing not only takes away our freedom to choose, but it creates a hatred and unkindness in our communities. The way people are treating others is appalling. Grown adults have yelled at my children on numerous occasions. We live in a place where we can access a ski resort regularly. My then-four-year-old just started to use the chairlift and was told that he would be kicked off if he came through again with his mask below his nose. This was said to him and not to me, who was right next to him. His mask while skiing was constantly wet and I would pull it away from his face as much as I could, but once in line for the lift, I would pull it back up, but he would continue to pull it down. My older children who ski independently had been yelled at numerous times by mountain staff threatening to take their passes away. My older children are not purposefully not wearing their mask. They just aren't used to it, especially when being outside. My nephew, on his first day at a new school where he knew no one, got up from the lunch table because he was gagging to spit out his food in the trash. The principal walked by and did not ask if he was okay or if he needed help. He told him he needed his mask on and not to get up without it. Making people the mask patrol has taken away humanity. There are no longer greeters at stores but mask patrollers. There are no longer friendly smiles at strangers but glares or eye avoidance. I have no problem with people wearing a mask and if I was sick and I needed to go out, I might opt for a mask too. But I'm not sick and in fact, I have the greatest protection you can have. I have antibodies and with the numbers, I'm guessing we're all going to have them soon. Please do not force this on people and children when we are and always have been capable of making decisions ourselves.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you. Welcome. Please come forward and state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Elliot Switzer and I live in East Anchorage. I'm 15, a sophomore in high school, and I'm against the mask ordinance. I want to start by saying these are my own opinions and things I believe and that I wanted to come speak after seeing many teens and even younger kids come up to speak. I hope my testimony can help in making you consider not passing this ordinance. When a mask mandate was put in place last year, I and the people around me were inconvenienced in numerous ways at school, whether it was being unable to hear or understand what one another was saying, the fact that I'd often be out of breath by simply traveling from class to class, and especially in sports practices and competition. It was very difficult and frustrating to go, to go to a competition where it wouldn't even be difficult to distance and have staff and officials forcing you to keep your mask on at all times. Even in my personal life and family life, for my mother losing her privately owned business, many businesses that we were involved in shutting down, and my entire family switching schools and even moving back to Anchorage for the sake of activities and opportunities that we lost in Eagle River. My understanding of the position that politically elected officials in America hold is that they are elected by the people and are supposed to act for the people. And I know I haven't seen that reflected in what I've seen from the majority of the assembly so far. I don't want to be misunderstood. I understand the position that people are taking in support of this ordinance. I've had family and family friends hospitalized by the coronavirus. But I want to reserve the right to choose how I live and act and this ordinance removes that right to a degree I do not believe in. I do not believe that the right response is falling back on a system that didn't even really work the first time, but instead understanding people's right to freedom of choice and giving them the authority to act on that right.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Thank you.
My name is Megan Kelly. I live in District Three, West Anchorage. I'm here today to speak in favor of the mask mandate. I have been watching public testimonies about this topic since they began. I've been moved to testify in person as a representative of the majority, but was worried about being exposed to COVID by those who are unmasked and some who are also unvaccinated. But Tuesday, I took an antibody test at Fred Meyer and I learned that I have long-term immunity IgG antibodies in my blood due to being vaccinated in March of this year. Not only that, but I believe that this KN95 mask works to mitigate COVID-19 as many experts have proven. While watching people who are against the mask mandate testify, I heard a few, a few mothers say that their children who experience autism cannot wear masks. I watched Ms. Allard ask one mother if she knew more parents within the autism community who struggled with putting masks on their children while, putting on, putting mask on their children while musing that it might be a problem. The testifier had no answer. So I'm here tonight masked among the maskless to speak as a member of that community. I am a mother of a six-year-old who experiences autism and has a speech delay. He has one-word answers to the questions I ask and speaks in three-word sentences if he speaks at all. My son has sensory processing disorder and he screams when the vacuum blender or blow dryer is on. He will bolt at parks and on trails. He will grab candy and eat it in the grocery store and cuddle me for hours in a restaurant. My six-year-old son has many obstacles associated with his autism, but wearing a mask is not one of them. In a, he is in a structured learning class for kids with autism in the Anchorage School District and he is required to wear a mask along with everyone else. He attends private speech therapy and occupational therapy where he must wear a mask. When I put him on the bus each morning, he happily dons his mask. Before therapy, when I hand him his mask, he puts it on each, he puts it on far before it's time to get out of the car. He has never complained, cried, or tried to rip it off his face. This is a kid who screams when I try to comb his hair. I am not saying that the mother who spoke of their, the mothers who spoke of their children with autism are lying about their struggles. What I am saying is that their kids don't want to wear a mask and my kid doesn't care either way. Autism has nothing to do with that. We need to wear a mask to protect others who cannot wear masks because of disorders that prevent them from wearing one. Until we have herd immunity and/or everyone has access to the vaccine, it is the socially responsible thing to do.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live.
Hello, my name is Adeline Davis. I am 10 years old and I am from District Five. I wanted to come talk about a few issues as a child of the city. These are my own concerns that I have and I wanted to come speak to you about. I have not hugged my grandmother since Valentine's Day of 2020. Due to the current rules, we would have to get tested, wear a mask, and still stay six feet apart. These are rules that my younger siblings are too young to understand. They don't understand why we can no longer hug, snuggle with, or be in connection with our grandma. Video chat, phone calls, and masked and social distance visits don't replace physical touch and my grandma being able to see our smile. When will I hug my grandma again? Will I hug my grandma again? How is it any different when I see my grandma's caregiver in Costco not wearing her mask correctly, who will then go back over to see my grandma and be in close physical contact with my grandma? My little brother can't even wear a mask. My little four-year-old brother has a sensitive skin issue that took him in and out of the doctors when he was one. We can't find what exactly causes it, but it is triggered with cold weather, masking, and anything that touches or rubs on his face. This rash is severe and quickly covers his entire body, taking weeks and sometimes months to go away and causing him major discomfort and pain. He did not comply the first time and he will not again. More mask mandates mean more dirty masks for me and my siblings to come across at the playground, on trails, in parking lots, and all around town. Like picture just going down the slide and you accidentally grab a used, dirty, nasty mask hiding in the grab bars of the slide. In closing, you are the current representatives responsible for representing the world of this city and making sure there's still a free society for my generation. You are teaching us to live in fear of a virus that has 100% survival rate among my age category in Alaska. You seem to be currently on track to hand us a society that lives in fear. You are handing us a society that has less freedoms than when my parents were my age. You are handing us a society that is easier to think within the box that you tell us rather than see all the possibilities this world can offer. Today, my generation is watching, expecting you will represent we, the people, and give us life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. Ma'am, please come forward. Ma'am, please come forward and state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. in which you live.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Assembly. My name is Natalia Gravogel. I have resided in Anchorage since 1993 and I live in District 3. I would like to start off by saying, Mr. Constant, even though I do not agree with your politics, I also do not agree with name-calling. I believe that we all have the right to choose who we love and are in relationship with because we live in the United States of America. I am a licensed professional counselor who specializes in working with post-traumatic stress disorder and developmental trauma. I am testifying tonight against AO 2021-91 because I believe this ordinance will cause more psychological damage than good. As a trauma-informed therapist, the majority of my caseload is working with teenagers and adults who have experienced childhood trauma and other traumatic events. These adults and teenagers are hypervigilant, anxious, have distrust in others, and sometimes distrust in authority figures because their perpetrators were an authority figure. I have had clients be very triggered with having to wear a mask because it brings back memories from their sexual and physical abuse, their face being smothered, covered, or taped. I believe you can all understand now why wearing a mask for some of my clients would be very distressing. One may argue, well then they can stay home and order things online if they don't want to wear a mask. With the increase in suicide rates and depression, I think isolation and staying home is more dangerous for my clients and others with these diagnoses. Now, this is not every client on my caseload, but I'm also one counselor in Anchorage, so I imagine there are many more. We know that the state of Alaska leads the nation in sexual assault of women and minors and childhood abuse, so there are many people in our community who may be psychologically impacted by this ordinance. Two nights ago, I was at home watching these proceedings on YouTube and a courageous young man recorded his testimony into the microphone. He stated he struggles with mental health issues. He inspired me to testify this evening. I want to be a voice for all the men, women, and children who are too fearful or traumatized to share their stories in these chambers. I strongly urge you to not pass this ordinance. I am here to use my voice in defense of my clients and other trauma survivors because this mask figuratively and physically silences them and I will not comply. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome, please come forward, state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live.
Good evening, guys. I'm District 3, my name is Russell Mangus. I oppose this ordinance. I fear this is going to make the divide way worse than it already is and we already know that it's really bad. And so, any information that people find these days, you can find anything you want. CDC buried study finding that student masking has, quote, "no statistically significant benefit." Less than three months ago, the Centers for Disease Control published a mostly ignored large-scale study of COVID-19 transmission in U.S. schools, which concluded that while masking then-unvaccinated teachers and improving ventilation was associated with lower levels of virus transmission in schools, social distancing, classroom barriers like the one that guy just ripped down, HEPA filters, and forcing students to wear masks did not result in a statistically significant benefit. I also have 31 studies here, these are all NIH, MedRxIV, JAMA Network, and other prestigious organizations. So I urge you guys to go look at things that you don't agree with. If you go back on Google, or if you go back on Duck.Go, because Google's pretty bad now, Yahoo Finance, FDA Medical Advisor, Congress is Owned by Pharma, that's 2018. Why aren't doctors speaking out about it? Here it is. Federation of State Medical Boards. The Federation of State Medical Boards Board of Directors released the following statement in response to a dramatic increase in the dissemination of COVID-19 vaccine misinformation and disinformation by physicians and other healthcare professionals on social media platforms, online and in the median. Physicians who generate and spread COVID-19 vaccine misinformation or disinformation are risking disciplinary action by state medical boards, including the suspension or revocation of their medical license. Due to their specialized knowledge and training, licensed physicians possess a high degree of public trust and therefore have a powerful platform in society, whether they recognize it or not. So I urge you, look it up, look into it. We aren't stupid. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Welcome, please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Thank you.
My name is Tim, I come from, or I'm in District 6. I just am opposing this ordinance. I just think if you guys really do care about our health, you would look into the immune system and how we can benefit from that, health-wise through whatever health providers you can look up. There's multiple different ways to improve our health by not wearing a mask. Informing the public on health, diet, what to put in their system to eat and stuff like that is a big way to solve the COVID cases going up and all those issues. Another thing is to look into the PCR tests and how those are calibrated because when those are cycled up, the cases go up and they're falsely-
Madam Chair, point of order.
Yes, Ms. Allard, what rule do you believe has been broken? It's more of the microphone and the broadcast has quit working.
Thank you, Ms. Allard, I have paused your testimony, we will verify. Ms. Allard, would you give a little more information about that, just so we can troubleshoot a little more effectively?
Well, since it came from Dick Trainey, I actually trust that he said that the microphone and broadcast has just quit working. I didn't get anything else. I would like to pause for at least a five-to-10-minute recess to maybe check on it, Madam Chair.
Actually, we'll just hold on a minute until we hear from Mr. Krabs and see what the status is. The meeting manager has confirmed that it's working.
Online, too. Per clerk's office staff.
Per clerk's office staff.
OIT, sorry.
I'll go ahead and restart your testimony.
So if you look into the PCR tests, they up the cycles to increase the case counts to create fear in the society of what's going on. And if you also look in deeper of where people are dying, people aren't dying in the streets, people are dying in hospitals. So I think there should be big investigations going on with the hospitals and the procedures that they're doing. We've had multiple different testimonies of people who have had friends or family pass away because of remiss beer that they're using in the hospitals and the ventilator systems that are suffocating and helping destroy the organs in the people's body that remiss beer affects. I think that's where all the focus should be and not on the public and what the public should be enforced to do. The public has knowledge to do their own research and they know their body better than anybody else. We should all have the freedom of choice that we can make the wise decision to do what's best for our bodies. We don't need Assembly members to tell us what we should do for our health. None of you guys are doctors. We can make our own decisions. And that's all I got to say, I just say I'm not for this, that's it.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome, please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live.
I'm Riley J. Roseberry, District 5. I'd like to applaud the liberal scum who are attempting to vise not only our country but the beautiful state of Alaska, because you guys are doing a great job at manipulating a population. What we're looking at is a virus with a higher survival rate than the flu, but you have people brainwashed into believing it's something more than that. A mask mandate is dangerous and unreasonable and it simply won't work. If you're one of the people who are afraid of COVID, then stay home. Why should the rest of society bend to you and your desires? Just because you're a spoiled liberal snowflake. And you guys already know all this, but you don't care? You know what you're doing and you know that we are all right? I guess you're just sick, that's probably what it is. But last week, a gentleman considerably older than me came here and mentioned how his generation won't take much more of this. Hey, pay attention, dude. I'm over here. Yeah, right. A gentleman last week said that his generation will not take much more of this, but it's not just his generation, it's my generation, it's your generation, her generation, his generation, everyone. You're not pushing against one generation, you're pushing against Alaskans and Americans. And we will fight back and you won't like it, okay? You're welcome for my testimony, have a great night.
Thank you. Welcome, sir, please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live. Thank you.
My name is John Matthew, I live in District 3. First of all, I want to thank each Assembly member for your willingness to serve our city. Second, I would like to point out that while my parents might compel me to eat my broccoli, I do not expect a waiter to raise the price of a menu item I choose simply because he thinks I should not order it. And I certainly do not expect to find my tires slashed if I insist on it. In the spring of 2020, Mayor Berkowitz warned us of a potential danger, advising us in light of what we did not know, it was prudent to exercise extreme measures to protect ourselves. That advice was critically important and Anchorage citizens responded by staying home and wearing masks. For over a month, our streets were deserted, empty of traffic. Since then, much lifesaving information has emerged and we've learned how to face the devil we have come to know. Our streets, stores, and restaurants are again filled and our worst fears have been held at bay. The tragedy of the story of the emperor's new clothes is his people endured a frivolous ruler who foolishly, consistently, and stubbornly disregarded wise counsel and common sense in favor of a single narrative. After the child called him out, did he firmly, finally set aside the misleading marketing in favor of responsible leadership? We hope so. We want to trust leaders to faithfully act in our best interests, doing the hard work necessary to discern what's best for us all. You are receiving common sense testimony and heartfelt pleas to examine all the evidence, to challenge commitments you yourselves have made in the last year and a half. Did the emperor finally face reality and fire the charlatan? Or did he continue to insist on his own version of reality? No one in this room can claim to never have made a mistake. The real test of character is admitting it, learning from it, and becoming a better person for it. The city of Anchorage has sustained real and quantifiable economic and even social damage from some of the decisions of this assembly over the last year. And the public you serve has faithfully testified to those damage. It does not take a child to see what appears to be either stunning incompetence or willful disregard for the good of our community. Please, choose a third option. Show us the respect due of free people. We will show you the same responsibility we did a year ago last spring. Set a new course to rebuild and restore our city and faithfully serve the city of Anchorage and its free citizens. Lead us and inspire us without trying to drive us and you will find that we will follow you.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome, sir, please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Go ahead, I'll start the timer.
Hi, my name's Matthew Vincent. I'm out in Eagle River in Chugiak and quite honestly, I'm quite nervous, so I might stumble or forget what I come up here to say. But I do have a few suggestions and I do want to share my beliefs as to how mandates and why mandates should not be enacted upon. Well, they shouldn't be a thing anyway, especially for something like the coronavirus. We all have the exact same information that you guys do from the CDC, we're given it all the time, we see it on Facebook, we can search it up on Google. We can make these decisions for ourselves as well. This is going to be a very brief testimony, but something I really want to say for the people that are undecided on this, I'm of the mind that you should vote no on the mask mandate, but only because there's a saying that I hear over and over again when I listen to a philosophy podcast, is that a government starts to become evil when they believe that they know better than their citizens. And by imposing this mask mandate, you are showing that you think that you know better when we all have the same information, you don't know what's better for each individual person. So please vote no, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome, ma'am, please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Julie Hanks Lindberg and I live in the District 1, Christopher Constant. I also pay $6,000 in property taxes every year and I'm going to start paying a lot more attention to where you guys are putting it, now that I've been here. I'm definitely against the mask ordinance. I'm here to tell you my journey that started in March 2020 to now. Oh, sorry. I am a member of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. My calling is in the Relief Society Presidency. In this calling, I'm asked to help all women in our congregation, plus downtown Anchorage, Turnigan, Fairview, and Government Hill. On March 11th, 2020, the whole United States of America shut down for two weeks to help hospitals get control of their cases. I prayed that I would get a snippet of this virus so that I could help the most vulnerable. One week later, I had it for five days and then quarantined for 14. I called all the women that I had been working with to see what they needed. Between the women at church and the women in the surrounding areas, I stopped at Costco at 6:00 AM trying to find toilet paper and cleaning supplies. I went to every shopping store to find the items that were necessary for these women and their families. I was shopping, cleaning, driving, picking up mail, fast food, and whatever they needed. But I was not the only one helping other people. My friend that was not healthy enough to go out started to make hats for the homeless. She makes one a day. She buys the yarn and even ordered a new machine. She has made over 360 hats and has donated them to homeless shelters, food banks in the Anchorage area. She puts them in a Ziploc bag and a scripture from the Bible and will be making them probably the rest of her life. My Relief Society President also helped women by the end of March 2020. Her and her husband decided to get back into making bread. They started making wheat bread and banana bread. And then they would call women to see if they could bring it to them and they would deliver it to their door. We have an app that's called Just Serve and on this app, people can go and list what help they might need. My daughter was asked to help this woman through an app and she needed help with appliances, being fixed, computer, clothes washed, and food shopped. There were many people who stepped up to help her with this. I can tell you that the city didn't just stop because people didn't go out of their homes. I'm sure that other churches and all good people have been out there helping those who are in need. The reason more people haven't talked about it is because we don't do that. Just because we don't wear a mask does not make us better nor does it make us less. We are all God's children, He asks us to love one another and we do. I know this ordinance will pass and I want you to know that God is really in control of the situation.
Thank you, ma'am, for your testimony. Welcome, please come forward and if you could pull the microphone down, there you go.
Hi, my name is Ross, I live in District 5 and I am against the ordinance. I am against it because- I am against it because my first wrestling season was canceled at three weeks because of the mandates. During my second wrestling season, I got fourth for state, and I had finally found something I was good at. Maybe I could have gotten first or second for state if the mandates had not shortened the season. I would have had more time to get better at my sport. Our season was only five weeks long, and we had two tournaments. Normally, seasons are at least two months long. I hate wearing masks because I can't breathe as well as, because I have, I can't breathe as well because I have asthma. I already had COVID, and all I had was a minor headache and a cold. Wearing masks bothered my asthma more than COVID did. I was not able to see my friends very much because of the mandates and the lockdown. That is why I'm strongly against the ordinance.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, have a point of information, please.
What is your procedural question, Ms. Allard?
Is it allowed that individuals who testify, if they finish their testimony, could they stand silently and protest for the entire three minutes?
It is my understanding that members of the public may use the time to convey their perspective as they wish, as long as it does not violate, as long as it doesn't include profanity or violence or anything like that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Welcome.
My name is Caitlin Dunphy, and I am 13 years old. I'm represented by Peterson and Dunbar. I want to thank the members of the Assembly who ask clarifying questions to try to find out where the public stands. It shows that the members are paying attention and doing their job to serve the public and to listen to them. I strongly oppose this ordinance. Masks affect me badly. When I wear them, I can't breathe, and I get lightheaded and dizzy. I don't mind being in tight, small spaces, but when I wear a personalized suffocation device, also known as a mask, I feel claustrophobic. Masks didn't protect me from COVID either. I'm not afraid of COVID because I've already had it, and I know how to beat it. I used to play volleyball, but due to the masking mandates, I was only to play against one team during the whole season. My parents weren't even allowed to attend the three games that my team had. Your mandates harmed my ability to play sports and to associate with kids my age normally. Due to past ordinances, my social skills and the confidence in my ability to talk to my friends have greatly diminished. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Hey, folks. The chanting is out of order, so I need to ask you to please stop the chanting. The chanting is out of order. It's fine to stay here for the full three minutes. So again, to members of the audience, shouting, chanting is not permitted. That is out of order. That is considered, that's considered a mass protest. Please refrain from chanting, from cheering. We want to hear from individuals. Welcome, ma'am. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live.
My name is Toby Ventura, and I live in Turnigan. So I want to know what the real goal here is. Fear is your biggest tool, and I've got to hand it to you. The media and the deep state did a first-class job at selling pandemic and fear. In fact, they did such a bang-up job, this will be the number-one device studied in how to conquer a country from within. Though, think about it. Do we ever see stacks of bodies on the curbs or the sidewalks? Did the overflow hospitals see one admittance? We, the people, were gullible enough to believe the two-week shutdown would be the be-all, end-all, and normal would happen again. Jobs died, businesses died, revenue-producing industries died, yet not one federal, state, or city employee missed a paycheck. And if you worked for a hospital, a big-box store, FedEx, or the postal service, you got overtime. When we got masking, 666 distancing, and more fear. Restaurants allowed to operate with a patio or in sub-zero temperatures. The shenanigans you have put businesses through to keep their doors open are more tricks than a circus ever thought of. Masking does not help anyone who is hard of hearing, like me, or rely on reading lips. Forget it. For children, who are the least likely segment of the population to get the virus. The regular flu completely disappeared, and we are inundated with, guess what, more fear. Isn't it interesting that the debunked PCR test doesn't get phased out until the end of virus season this year? Then we got the emergency use authorization jab, masquerading as a vaccine for high-risk individuals, a virus which has between 95% and 99.5% recovery rate. Oh, crap. Time to inject more fear. Hey, fear sells. We all know that by now. I'm fairly sure that most people who have received the jab did so without full disclosure. When was the last time you grocery shopped for an item without looking at the label or reading up on the side effects? This is what I predict. The population as a whole these days are a lot less fearful. And all the Assembly chairs not occupied right now will not be re-elected next term. I do not comply.
Thank you for your testimony.
Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one. I do not comply.
So I had said we were going to take a break at 7:00, and it's actually 7:49. So we'll go ahead and take a 15-minute break now to provide opportunity for further questions among individuals. We'll be back in 15 minutes.
Could I please do a sound check on the phone? Mr. Peterson?
I'm here, Barbara.
Thank you. Mr. Constant? Ms. Zalatell?
I'm here, thank you.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
I'm here too, thank you, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Constant?
I'm here, this is Mr. Constant.
I'm sorry, was that you, Mr. Constant?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I want to note that you're timed to testify. And however, even if you choose to remain silent for the end or the duration, of course, that is your choice. It's not the time for other people to be at the podium, though. And when folks start chanting, we can't hear. So I do ask again that you refrain from chanting and clapping. With that, welcome, sir. Please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live.
My name is Robert Moore. I've been a Midtown resident since before most of the Assembly was born. Okay? We need to stop the name-calling, the finger-pointing, and the divisiveness. This is splitting our town apart. I strongly oppose 2021-91. It's divisive, it's splitting our town. The other day, I was in the park, and I had somebody get really, really ugly and vicious with me. This is not the town I grew up in. This is not the town I've lived in all my life, almost all my life. There's a couple of things we don't know about COVID. We don't know what we don't know. It is a new virus. Couple of things we do know. We're all going to die one day. Theology aside, no one lives forever. This, trying to manipulate people with fear is splitting us apart. The Anchorage Assembly needs to hear, you've heard from everybody about the divisiveness. We see it right here in the room. We need to put that aside. We need to not pass this ordinance. So some statistics, you guys have been hearing statistics all night long. 97% of the population will get COVID sometime in their life. That's a CDC statistic that they just came out with. I wish I had it handy. We're going to have it. It's in our population. Masks don't work. If the masks work, why are we having so many breakthrough infections? You can find studies that support, contradict, whatever you want, they're not working. Oh, I better speed up here a little bit. Science is not settled. Alaska's COVID infections are on the decline. Alaska's hospitalizations are on the decline. Deaths are on the decline. 90% of the most vulnerable Alaskans are vaccinated. Children under 14 have a 5-in-1 million chance of dying from COVID. So there's really no reason to have this ordinance. Younger people ages 18 to 35 are contracting COVID. They're the biggest population, but their infections are not nearly as severe as they were when we were first getting them. We have 60% vaccination rate. Let's face it, the people that aren't vaccinated, that aren't wearing masks, you're not going to convince them with an ordinance. The other thing is, do we really want the civil unrest associated with an ordinance? Do we really want Anchorage to be like the cities in the continental U.S.? I guess that's about my time. I had other points, but I'll have to leave those for later. Any questions?
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome.
My name is Elizabeth, and I live in District 3. I don't want to wear a mask. It makes it very hard to breathe, and several other of my classmates also hate them. Masks also make it hard to understand people. On last year's summer break, when we were forced to wear suffocators, also known as masks, I was less than four feet away from my third-grade teacher, and I didn't understand who she was until my dad told me who she was. I'm not going to be one of those people who wear a mask and still fear for my life. So please understand and change so you can work with us.
Thank you for your testimony. And I need to remind members of the public to please refrain from using your voice during this time. As a crowd, the time is reserved for individual speakers. Welcome, ma'am. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Could you turn on the microphone, please? Yellow button there, you see? And then you may need to bring it a little bit closer. Thank you.
So my name is Dale Myrie, and I live in Midtown. Do not like public speaking, so it's a big deal to be here. But first of all, situational awareness is bottles been setting here throughout the meeting, so I don't know what it is. You guys may want to address it. If I was at an airport, they would be addressing it. Okay, so I would like to thank Mayor Bronson, Assembly Member Jamie Allard, and Forrest Dunbar for their service to our country and the ability to protect my rights and freedoms. If I missed any members that have served, please let me know. So I am presenting to a voice my concerns regarding the proposed mask mandate. This may fool you, but it's my choice. And it's my choice to wear when I want to or when I feel at risk. Anchorage previously had a mask mandate. The mask mandates do not stop the transmission of COVID. And in fact, during the mask mandates, I do believe it was reported that one of the Assembly members contracted COVID. So it doesn't stop it. There are several health conditions that impact COVID that are not being addressed. Will the Assembly start addressing that? Will they look at the ways to decrease the mortality? Obesity, substance use, COPD, cardiac conditions, all of those impacted. Are you going to start mandating? Concerns regarding that? The ability to make the decision to mask or not should be left to the individual. I am vaccinated. Due to my type of work, I avoid crowds to minimize the risk. And in fact, I have tickets to be in Tampa, Florida for a concert this weekend. I'm electing not to go. I'm not putting myself at risk, but it's my choice. It's not anyone in this room's choice except mine. I carry alcohol and hand sanitizer. As I watch everybody come up here, touch everything, guess what? People move their masks down, up, and down all day long. They wear the same mask days and days on end. So they're touching everything, they're touching everything else. Where do you stop? Where do you stop the mandates? I walk outdoors for my activity. I've had to change where I'm walking due to the homeless camps that just popped up on Campbell Creek. For my safety, I'm not going to go in that area. So the bottom line is, why are you mandating? Give us the chance to continue to make the choices. I don't need a dictator. I don't need you to dictate what I do. I am educated and can make my own decisions.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live.
Hello. My name's Molly Morgan. I'm in District 4. I'm a registered nurse. I've worked at the local hospitals since 2013. I've worked through the COVID pandemic, putting myself at risk, taking care of everyone as compassionately as possible throughout what is a difficult time for us all. I'm here to voice my opposition to the proposed mask mandate. Mandates like this are as divisive to nurses as they seem to be to the general public. I wear a mask while taking care of patients, although evidence suggests the benefit of wearing a mask is marginal at best. There's a percentage of patients who feel better and seem reassured, correctly or incorrectly, when we wear masks. But whereas nurses, I think, are willing to wear masks, a mask mandate is a slippery slope that's dividing us all. There's no doubt that this mandate, if passed, will be rapidly followed by other mandates, including likely a vaccine mandate. I'm 24 weeks pregnant, and I've been working throughout the pandemic on the front lines of patient care while others get to stay home. I won't be working much longer because, as of October 18th, I'll be put on unpaid leave and then fired on November 17th from my hospital and left without health insurance because I'm concerned about the potential for long-term side effects from the COVID vaccine to my unborn child. The Anchorage Daily News says no one's been fired due to the vaccine mandates. That's because it's not November 17th yet for where I work. There's no data about long-term side effects in pregnancy from this vaccination. It's impossible to judge about long-term side effects from vaccine in pregnancy until several years of data have been assessed. In the meantime, I've been tasked with making a type of Sophie's Choice, whether to leave the profession I love and work so hard to achieve, or whether to put my unborn child at an impossible-to-calculate risk. Drug manufacturers say the vaccines are safe in pregnancy. They said that about thalidomide as well. I'm depressed and angry, and I have the right to be both. It's becoming increasingly clear that measures such as mask-wearing are leading to increase in depression and mental health issues. I see it in myself and in nurses all around me. I see it in children around me, deprived of freedom to smile at each other. I see the dissension between nurses who disagree on the value and the safety of the COVID vaccination. I don't want my child to be born into a world without smiles and such dissension, but into a world where everyone is free to protect their unborn child by making their own decisions with their healthcare provider about their medical care. Whether it be masks or vaccinations, I implore you, stop dividing us and vote no for the mask mandate. Any remaining time, I'll stand here in silence for my toddler who cannot wear a mask.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome, ma'am. Please come forward. State your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Come forward, ma'am.
My name is Tanya. I live in Eagle River. Obviously, I'm not from Eagle River or Alaska. I moved here from Mississippi. I've been a nurse for 35 years. So I'm just gonna start here with... I just can't... I'm just speechless. I can't believe that we have been reduced to a state where an employer makes a mother choose between her job or career that she's devoted her adult life to, or the health of her child. It's insanity. I would die if I had to make that choice. We all worked the front lines through the COVID craziness, and now we gotta be fired if we don't take it. As a nurse, I take care of patients both before and after medical procedures, and part of my job and duty as a nurse is to relieve my patients' fear and anxiety by whatever measures I can possibly find to suit or to take care of that. Every one of them is afraid, and more so now than ever before, mostly of what the unknown is, but now all this COVID stuff. For most patients, everything goes all right, and their medical procedure helps them either get the diagnosis they need or relieve of whatever the issues are or the problems. Although often, just as coming out of anesthesia, they are still not sure, and the fear is always with them, and especially now. My job, again, is to do everything reasonable to combat that fear. Anchorage Assembly, this too should be your job. And just as I can tell my patients they have a 99% chance of feeling better, part of your job when dealing with a virus that has a 99% survival rate is to remind us that we, if we get this virus, most of us are gonna come out just fine. And when doing... And when we do, we are going to have an immunity that those wanting to instill fear and pursue their own selfish agendas try to make believe is not true. Those selfish agendas include lining their own pockets and getting rid of those that don't get along on the on politics. A mask mandate only adds to more fear. It causes a world of darkness with everyone's faces and intentions hidden and uncertain. It turns neighbor against neighbor, which is the inevitable outcome of the "snitch-on-your-neighbor" portion of the ordinance that Mrs. Zelletail originally wanted. Bless her heart. If Miss Zel... That's something we say in Mississippi. If Miss Zelletail truly believed that these masks worked so well, she'd be here instead of hiding at home. That's just not debatable.
Thank you for your testimony. Ma'am, please come forward and state your name for the record. Welcome. You'll have three minutes and the part of town in which you live, too, please.
Good evening. My name is Melody Russo, and I have lived in Anchorage since 1976. And I lived nearby Mr. Weddleton's business of Boscos. I am really glad to see the public here, and I want to express a couple silver linings for what's been going on. One, vocabulary lessons that everyone has been learning. Dilatory, I'm sure, will be remembered. And also the field trip of all the students and children here for participating in their public process, to make them be engaged, members of society lest they ignore what's going on and let their rights be taken away from them by those in power. Also, I want to encourage everyone to read, someone mentioned it earlier, The Emperor's New Clothes. I have been thinking of that book for two or three years with this stuff going on. Also, I encourage people to watch the movie Wag the Dog, because that is also enlightening to what's been going on. So here I am, here in opposition to AO 2021-91. I have been looking through the language and noticed through all the "whereas" language, there's a number of places where they talk about tests, test results, case counts, and increases in cases. So I'm going to ask for the Assembly, which they should have been doing all along, to get an understanding of the transparency about the PCR tests and the cycle counts that are actually being used on the test, on the people in Anchorage, because the municipality of Anchorage led a contract to Visit Health to do these tests all over town. What are the cycle counts that they are running these tests at? Because there is a false positive association when you run high-cycle counts. Someone else in earlier testimony cited the person who invented the PCR test cautioning about those cycle counts. So when you state number of cases, you should state the cycle counts behind all of those cases to give the public confidence that what you're talking about is not fear-mongering, but it's actual, more believable results. So a lot of your "whereas" is here, without you doing that and backing that up, are pretty weak. And the whole ordinance kind of is based on every "whereas." You're building your case with all these "whereas."
Thank you for your testimony, ma'am. Welcome. Please come forward and state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Roxanna Castaneda, and I live in the South Anchorage District. I am a medical assistant and work in one of the clinics here in Anchorage. I am a mother, wife, a full-time frontline worker, and a United States Marine veteran. The last way I want to spend my evenings is before the Assembly, night after night, trying to reclaim my freedoms and hear my community fight. Yet here I am. I'm exhausted, ladies and gentlemen. All I hear nowadays is constant debate about masks and mandates everywhere, knowingly or unknowingly, intentionally or unintentionally. The ordinance and others like this will give bullies the hall pass on attacking people with opposing views. I have always told my son, we cannot control the actions of others and those around us, but we can control our own actions. The decision on this mandate, in my eyes, is really quite simple. Make both sides happy and don't force us. If you want to wear a mask, or two, or three, I've honestly lost count at this point. You can't... You can do so without repercussions. If you decide not to wear one, then you can wear it without fear of repercussions. At this point, we have reached enough... Received enough information on the effectiveness of masks and vaccines, which is available to everyone who wants it. We have the information to make an informed decision. Please stop with this power grab and let the individual choose for themselves and their family. The whole mask mandate has brought out the worst in everyone. I've been attacked and ostracized at work for my views. I've been verbally attacked with my child in public. Some of my son's former teachers repeatedly told him that he would die and kill others if he didn't wear a mask, even though they knew he had a medical exemption form from his provider. I don't know anything... Or I don't know about anybody else, but I don't think any child should be burdened with the stress of death, especially at six years old. There is no wonder why suicide rates among children are at historical rates. With all this, I can't blame... I can't say I blame those individuals who are attacking us. I blame the media and our political leaders. Assemblymembers, you are in the position to support our mayor, yet you are pushing this hatred and fear, which in turn causes others to lash out. The members of the Assembly are the ones who should be level-headed and unite, vice-divide. Our mayor made a decision on the mask mandates months ago. Stop undermining our elected mayor. Support him. I would like also to note one thing. Mayor Bronson defended the Assemblymember constantly against slurs publicly, yet our mayor receives threats of violence via social media, and I haven't seen the same courtesy extended towards him. It's time we unite, and let's put our differences aside and support each other. Do the right thing and vote no on this ordinance.
Please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live.
My name is William DeSchwinetz. I live in District 4. I've been in Anchorage a couple inches short of 50 years, so I've been here a while. And I, first of all, want to say thank you for all the elected people here that are here, because it's a thankless job, and it's a lot of time and a lot of effort, so I appreciate you being here. And thank you very much for letting me speak, along with these hordes of other people, because that's cool. I mean, it's fabulous to be able to take... Give public testimony. Thank you so much. So as I understand it, and maybe somebody could correct me, but under the present circumstance in Anchorage, I have a liberty to either wear a mask or not wear a mask. I have the liberty to mandate a mask in my house or not. I have the liberty to mandate a mask in my business or not. And I have the liberty to go to a business that mandates masks or not. And so I love this liberty that I live in. And so I love this, you know, the history of the United States is, all these folks came from kingdoms, and they hated the thing that the government said, "This is what you're doing. Read my lips." So they said, "Let's have limited government. Just do the minimum and let the people decide the rest of the stuff. Let them figure their own stuff out." And so I'm so glad that I'm in the United States, we're in that type of a deal. However, this appears to be a watershed event here in Anchorage, because on one side, I have, you know, I could have the opportunity to wear a mask or not, go, you know, go to a business that requires masks or not, or so on. Or I can have the government mandate and tell me, "You're smarter than me, and we're doing what you say, not what I think is smart." So it's a simple thing of either government's limited and the people actually are smart and can make their own decisions, or, no, if you're in public office, you get to say what everybody does. So I think it's a watershed event. Here's why. So I'm... I've been here a long time. I'm a voter, you know? And I have to confess that I have a really bad track record of going to the polls for municipal assembly and not having done my due diligence research. Like, what does this person stand for? What do they believe? What they don't... What do they not believe? You know, what's going on? And I just haven't done my job. And so this ordinance is gonna settle the question. So I'm so thankful for this ordinance, because you're gonna pass this or not pass it, vote it or not vote for it. You're gonna... You're gonna veto it, and then the rest of us will know how to vote the next election. I'm so thankful.
Thank you for your testimony. Please come forward. State your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. You have three minutes. Please turn on the microphone.
My name is Christopher Gatch. I live in District 5. Mr. Forrest Dunbar is my representative. I serve with Youth for Christ. I'm the Executive Director for the State of Alaska, and I'm not here with a political agenda. I'm just here with numbers. We focus on 11- to 19-year-olds. It's what we're about. We've been doing it since 1945, since Billy Graham founded Youth for Christ. We care about our 11- to 19-year-olds. We walk with them through life, life on life, sometimes for many, many years. I have some data here, and it's from AmericasHealthRankings.org, and it's about teen suicides. These aren't 11- to 19-year-old figures. They're 15- to 19-year-old figures. On national... Our national average currently, per 100,000 youth, we're seeing 11 suicides per 100,000 between 15 and 19 years old. And that's actually where we were in the state of Alaska in 2019. Right now, we're at 45. Before I came here, I was at a local mental health hospital, and I was hanging out with native youth, Yupik, Athabaskan. And it's hard to listen to their stories. Here's another article from NBCNews.com. There are many, many articles about teen suicide rates right now during COVID. There are many, many articles about teen suicide rates right now during COVID. Says, "Emergency Room Visits For Adolescent Suicide Attempts soared this past summer." This article was written June 11th, 2021. "The summer and winter, especially among girls, perhaps in connection to America's struggle with COVID-19. New Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Data Revealed Friday. There was a 22.3% spike in emergency room trips for potential suicides by children aged 12 to 17 in summer 2020 compared to 2019, according to findings published in the CDC's Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report. That trend seemed to continue into this recently completed academic year, as visits were up to 39.1% this winter, compared to the previous winter," the report said. "The data was particularly alarming among girls aged 12 to 17. Between February 21st and March 20th this year, emergency department visits for potential suicide attempts were up 50.6% compared to the same period in 2019," data showed. "And they visited emergency rooms for suspected suicide attempts 26.2% more often between July 26 and August 22 than they did during the same time in 2019," the CDC researcher said. The CDC analysis was drawn from data collected by the National Syndromics Surveillance Program." It goes on and on. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live. Thank you.
My name is Lindsay Hufford Gatch. I am a lifelong resident of East Anchorage. I use my maiden name there, even though I just got married three months ago to the previous speaker, because I want to tell you a little story about my family, and I promise it is relevant. Over 300 years ago, my ancestors were forced out of the village of Schweigern, Germany, and eventually forced out of the country itself. Their crime? They wanted to worship God as they saw fit, as they saw that He instructed in His Word, not what the governing authorities said, the ways they were allowed to worship. In 1729, they arrived in America, and ever since, my direct ancestors have fought in every single war to protect our freedoms of life, liberty, the pursuit of happiness, but the right to worship God as we see fit. This winter, when there were mask mandates that specifically targeted churches and told churches how masks had to be worn during times of worshiping God, the church that I have attended since birth felt that they had to comply. So rather than cover my face, I, like everyone else in this room, was made in the image of God, and my face is to reflect His glory. The reason each one of us is alive is to bring God glory, whether we choose to do it or not. That is the purpose of life. So I chose to find a new church home, to no longer fellowship with some of my family, some of my friends, because I felt it was important for me to worship God as I see fit. And not just as I see fit, but because of how God led me, and I understand through His Word. My fear with this ordinance is so many more churches, even the new church home that I love so very much, that did not succumb to fear or threat of government overreach, I fear that more churches will feel that they have to tell other people how to worship. That is only going to escalate the problems we have. We need God, and I know not everyone agrees, but I'm telling you the truth. And it scares me, because when my ancestors came to America, they came because we were a land where there was freedom of religion. America today is the greatest nation on the planet. If we don't have freedom here, where do we go? I told you about the history of my family. We fight for freedom. That's what Huffords do. And you are backing us into a corner. There's nowhere else to go. We will be forced to fight. And I've been speaking with other people in this room, and that will break our hearts if that's where this comes to. But you have pushed against the wall. Please don't do that. Please do not incite violence in our city. That's what's happening with this ordinance.
Welcome, sir. Please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. I'm going to go ahead and start the timer now. Sir, I'm going to start the timer now.
What?
I'm going to start the timer now. I've been asking you to come forward.
Thank you. No, my name is Eric Lambertson. I have Waffling Weddleton, and Ms. LaFrank is my representatives. I vow to get rid of both of you in the next election. At the beginning of this, I was participating in the Recall Rivera campaign. I wasn't part of your district, but I was pushing people along and getting people organized. That was me. I was participating significantly in Zalatol's recall. I wasn't part of that district, but I was helping people along. I was driving people around the neighborhood, and I was getting people in to vote against both of you. I vow, as a member of this community, to do my part in getting rid of every single one of you people that are going to vote for this mandate. I guarantee this mandate is going to be voted in. Why? Because of the money. You are so anxious to balance this budget with the money that you're going to get from the feds for a mask mandate. You got how much last time? $50 million? And you're salivating. Oh, baloney. Zero? Try it. Try and convince any of us that this mandate doesn't come with a whole bunch of money from the feds. Yeah, go ahead, goose egg yourself. Hey, Mr. Bronson, Mayor Bronson, I don't know if you're aware of it, but these guys really don't like you very much. Sorry to tell you. And I just thought I'd give you an opportunity to ask me a question. You know, maybe that's not possible with the tyrant that we have, or the tyranny that we have in every single one of you bozos that back this one. And Constant, you at home, sit back, relax. There's people coming for your seat too.
Sir.
What?
Go ahead.
So I come from Boston, been here 26 years. I was educated in the Underground Railroad. We're going to have to have one now that we have a mask mandate. You're going to come after everybody who doesn't wear a mask. So let's organize, people. The other thing that we need to organize is a community that's going to back the people that aren't going to take the vaccine. We're going to have to back the people that are going to lose their jobs, lose their livelihood, because they're not willing to take a stinking plandemic vaccine. You want to go up against some people like us? We're getting our backbone. We're standing tall. We're locking our knees, and we're coming after you.
Welcome. Please come forward, state your name for the record, the area of town in which you live. I'm going to go ahead and start the timer. I hope folks quiet down. Ma'am? 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 You need to stop. You are warned. You must stop or you'll be asked to leave. You have been warned. Please go ahead, state your name for the record and area of town in which you live.
Hi, my name's Kate Gabriel, and I'm a member of District Four. I moved up to Anchorage after I graduated from Gonzaga back in 2009. And prior to that, I moved around a lot, spending most of my time in Portland, Oregon area. Now, trust me, when I first moved up here, I could not wait to get back to my family, to what I was used to, but after visiting Portland a couple months ago, that desire has quite changed. When COVID protocols first started up here, I understood. We had no idea what we were dealing with, so the precautions felt necessary. As time kept moving on, it felt more and more hopeless to see any progress. However, I'm used to dealing with rules I don't agree with, and I wanted to be a rule follower. However, that has changed my mind. I was done with mandates last May, when the mask mandate was lifted, except for at the schools. I took my kids to go get flowers for their teachers. As we're walking into the store with no masks, my son turned to me and started having a panic attack about not wearing a mask. He was telling me how we were going to get sick with COVID and die, and he is six years old. It took some time to calm him down and explain it was safe, and that some people choose to wear a mask, and that's completely fine, but we don't have to. Fast forward to this fall, after being in school for two weeks, he brought home a little prize from school, because he was being so good, and his little sister wanted to see. That's normally not a problem with them. He had another panic attack, and then explained and cried out that that's how we'll get COVID and die. This is never how we discussed it in our house. He's hearing that at school, he's hearing that out in the public. Because of the mask mandates, my kids stopped going to soccer. They weren't given snacks, because the adult teacher in the room was terrified of getting COVID and uncomfortable with their masks being down for more than lunchtime. They haven't been able to socialize outside of school to avoid more, so they would avoid more mask time. I even saw a water fight at a school event where all the kids were wearing masks outside. How was basically waterboarding safer than the potential threat of COVID? My kids have been taught to listen, be kind, and be respectful, and it's really hard to continue these lessons and values when it's never reciprocated. This mandate continues to push unnecessary fear onto our children. Please vote no.
Thank you for listening. Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live.
My name is Cesar Martenson. I live in downtown Anchorage. Chris Constant is my representative. I am here tonight to speak in opposition to the mask mandate. I want to be clear, I am fully vaccinated. As a condition of work, I wear a mask at work, and I also wear a mask when I'm in crowded areas generally, tonight being an exception. I do not, I am not afraid of those in this room who are unvaccinated or who are not wearing a mask. I'm not afraid of my neighbors. I want to state that for the record. I would also like to thank Adam Trombley for removing the barrier that was at this dice. That barrier was not about the safety of the men and women in this room, it was a barrier between the people and their government, and he exercised his right, and quite frankly, his duty in accordance with his oath to the Constitution of the United States in removing that barrier. It was not a violation of separation of powers. Thank you, Adam Trombley, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for backing up that decision. I'd like to speak to the fundamental problem that I see with this ordinance, which is the fundamental assault on some core values in our society, namely free speech. We saw tonight, which is the first time in 20 years, as a lifelong Alaskan that I've ever seen, where both Crystal Kennedy and Jamie Allard were silenced by the majority on this assembly, because they did not like the views that they were expressing, which are the views of their constituents. So basically, this majority silenced Eagle River and Chugiak from speaking on this assembly. That is not an action that I would, that is an grievous action in light of past majorities on this assembly with liberal figures such as L.V. Gray Jackson, Dick Trainee, and et cetera. I mean, a precedent has been set. It's been of harm to our community. Lastly, I want to speak to something that some others have spoken to, which is religious freedom. I am a devout Roman Catholic. I profess that I follow the gospel of Jesus Christ. And I would profess that this ordinance is an unprecedented assault on our religious freedom and our ability to pray, and our ability to congregate, to celebrate our relationship with God. And it is not driven by science, it is driven by politics. When Mayor Berkowitz initiated the first attack on our religious freedom, it was based on critical businesses. Tell me how a pawn shop being open is more critical of a business than our churches. This is not about science, this is about politics. And what I would suggest to the assembly is that we follow what I consider to be the pro-civil liberties policy that the mayor has rightly put into place, which is leaving it to individual choice. I object to this mandate, and I ask that the assembly honor past norms and respect the free speech of the two minority members on this body. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Could you turn the microphone down? Thank you. And please state your name for the record. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sasha Schuman. I am a homeschool junior, and I'm 16 years old. I live on the south side of town, District Six. I've been taught by a wonderful mother and a wonderful community that I am a part of. I have learned to stand up for what I believe in. What is happening behind the scenes right now? This is the answer no one knows the question to, except for you guys. These masks are no longer helping us, they're becoming more of a statement. Many of my friends say that I'm helping or harming others by not wearing one or wearing one. Give me a second. I certainly do not want my kids growing up in this type of environment, where they don't get the choice, and they don't get to grow up knowing that they have freedom. Which brings me to what my country and our country is based upon. We are told we have a choice, so why don't we get those rights or our freedom? Our generation, what are we trying to build up? One that act like robots? One that caves in to control? One that are scared to speak because they either get casted out or maybe not even listened to? If I allow this, what will happen for my family? My future kids and my future grandkids? I will not stand for this, and I will not allow this. Moving on to my family. Family is a very important aspect to me. Kids are important to me. I am also a babysitter, and I used to teach preschool kids. A skill or talent that I have is kids with disabilities. They have a voice that needs to be heard as well. Let me introduce you to my brother, first with a mask on and second without a mask on.
I'm Nicholas Schuman, and I am 14.
And now he will take his mask off.
I'm Nicholas, and I'm 14.
Thank you. As you can notice, my brother has a difficulty speaking. You have to take the time to understand him, which means you need to listen to him closely. Without a mask, I can barely understand a lady behind a counter, so how am I supposed to understand what my own brother is saying? Are we going to stop him from being able to speak to the best of his abilities? By putting on a mask, we're stopping him from reaching his full ability to interact with everyone else. He's already getting bullied for not being normal. I am an older sister standing up for my brother. Not only am I wanting to have everyone else reach the full potential and capabilities, but I stand for freedom, I stand for personal choice, I stand for the people around me, and best of all, I stand for God. Thank you, and I'd like to thank everyone else in this room.
Thank you for your testimony. Please come forward, state your name for the record. Please come forward and state your name for the record, whoever's next. I'm going to start the timer.
Hi, my name is Phineas Schuman, and I'm against mask mandates. Can we just all take a pause and pray for one another? Dear Lord, I pray for this nation, I pray for the people, I pray for the government, I pray for the hearts to be changed, Lord. I pray for everything around this, all the chaos that is going around this, Lord. Let us heal, let us bind us together, Lord, in everything that we say and do. May everything be in the glory for you, Lord. And whatever comes after this, just be with us, Lord. Just give us patience, kindness, peace, love, joy, and abundance, Lord. Give us the time to see and heal each other, Lord, and to make a difference together, to live together in harmony and peace, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
You against it?
I am against mask mandates.
Say it louder. Say it again.
I am against mask mandates and I am proud of this country.
Say it again. Okay. Last class.
And I am against mask mandates and I am proud of this country.
Okay, we're going, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next speaker. We'll take a five-minute break. Okay, let's go ahead and get started. If members would please take their seats. We're going to go ahead and get started again. And actually, Ms. Zalatell? If folks could please take their seats, we're going to go ahead and get started. Okay, we're back in session. We're starting back up again. I have Ms. Zalatell in the queue. Ms. Zalatell, for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It doesn't look like we'll finish testimony by 10:00 p.m. tonight, the time in which we are noticed. I move to continue the special meeting to tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. here in, there in chambers.
Wait, wait, folks. This meeting will continue to go as scheduled till 10:00 p.m. What Ms. Zalatell is moving, motioning, okay. Okay.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Zalatell, seconded by Mr. Perez Verdia. Ms. Zalatell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given that this issue still has great urgency and it seems that evening testimony, we can't seem to get through, I think we need to devote the proper time and energy and move this into where we can go on...
Excuse me, Ms. Zalatell. I need to ask members of the public to refrain from shouting. Go ahead, Ms. Zalatell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think we need to go ahead and continue forward. And Friday is a day that we traditionally have done business. I did not see anything on our calendars and I think it is important that we continue to move forward, even with many nights of testimony. It's time to really just move forward in a way that we can get through this. By, by what I've heard in chambers tonight, it seems like continuing from night to night isn't productive.
The man in the blue shirt in the front, you have been warned. Do not shout again. Ms. Zalatell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just saying, we need to get this work done, so I encourage everyone to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zalatell. I'm going to go ahead and go through the queue. Ms. Allard?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm very opposed to this. We are, we're not to just rush through this, we have a public process that should be respected. It appears that Ms... It appears Ms. Zalatell wants to rush through it because she's not interested in hearing what her constituents or other constituents are saying.
Please refrain from, Ms. Allard, please refrain from speaking to motive. Go ahead. Okay, members of the public need to stop shouting.
It appears...
Go ahead, Ms. Allard.
Thank you. I would not recommend for us to start at 09:00 tomorrow. This is not a typical move that we make and I would hate for the public or anybody else to think we're trying to bypass public process by individuals that work for a living that can't be here at 09:00 o'clock. I would, I would, I would urge my colleagues to think carefully on this and urge a no vote.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move to amend the motion to start tomorrow's meeting at 3:00 in the afternoon. An amendment, yes, has been moved by Ms. Kennedy and seconded by Ms. Allard to amend the motion to start at 3:00 p.m. Go ahead, Ms. Kennedy. Thank you, Madam Chair. Because we typically start meetings at 5:00, sometimes 6:00, at least this allows just a couple of us to start a couple of hours early. You know, we recognize that most people work during the day, yes, granted some work at all hours, believe me, I know. But at least this way, we could start early enough to get through even more of the testimony tomorrow night. So I would urge my colleagues to vote for a little bit more of a compromise on this and start at 3:00 and approve this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Mr. Weddleton?
I guess, how long would you expect the meeting to be scheduled for?
A question to me? I don't know, 9:00 or 10:00 p.m.? I mean, the body can extend.
Okay. I mean, typically on an agenda, we would have like start at 9:00, go to 2:00 or 5:00 or, but so if it started at 3:00? Okay.
10:00 p.m.?
Start at 3:00, go to 10:00? Okay, okay. I suppose I...
Was there anything else, Mr. Weddleton?
No, thanks.
Thank you. We'll go to, next to Mr. Constant.
I'm going to wait in the queue. I don't support this motion, but that's not what we're talking about.
So you would like to wait until the end, Mr. Constant, to speak?
Yeah, I want to speak to the main motion.
Main motion. Okay, thank you. Mr. Perez Verdia?
Thank you. I do have a question for the mover. I'm, I guess I'm, I'm not clear on why 3:00, our pattern has been starting at 5:00 and ending at 10:00 and, and then extending if necessary. My, my concern is that, is that very few people are not at work at 3:00, 3:00 o'clock, and so, including me. So I'm, I'm wondering why we wouldn't just continue with the same pattern that we've been doing and starting at 5:00, ending at 10:00. Thank you.
Mr. Perez Verdia, was that a question to...
Yes, I want a clarification as to the rationale behind starting at 3:00. That's all. Thank you.
3:00, okay. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Perez Verdia. I actually just offered this as a bit of a compromise. I'm happy to try to actually amend it to 5:00 first. So if the second or would be willing, I would, I would change my amendment to start at 5:00.
Second.
Okay, so the amendment is to start at 5:00 p.m. And then Ms. Allard, I know you were in the queue, but I have, see, Mr. Constant, you are not, you want at the end. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Allard.
I was actually fine with, Ms. Kennedy did it for us. She just moved it. She amended the amendment, so thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other members in the queue, members may proceed to vote on the amendment to change the start time to 5:00 p.m. tomorrow to continue the special meeting. Mr. Peterson? Mr. Constant?
No.
Ms. Zalatell? Ms. Quinn Davidson? The amendment fails, 4 to 7. We are now back on the main motion to continue the special meeting to tomorrow, starting at 9:00 a.m. to go to 9:00 p.m.
I'm going to ask you guys, just stop, 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 stop. You guys, let the, let the chair, let the chair, let the chair do what she needs to do. Please just stop for me. Just stop.
Mr. Constant, on the main motion? Do you want to speak on the main motion?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to note that the motion is a little too specific in the sense that it says "at chambers." And I believe that the municipal manager attempted to cut off the video stream tonight, that the mayor has forced security to leave the building in an attempt to create a more hostile environment. I take that back, I shouldn't speak to motive.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Believe, I took it back. I believe that the...
Madam Chair, point of order.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Mr. Constant, I do ask that you refrain from speaking to motive.
Yeah, I apologize for that. I didn't mean to.
And would you hold a moment, please? I believe Ms. Allard has made a point of order. Ms. Allard, what rule do you believe has been broken?
That the, what you had just said, that the, Mr. Constant is reaching with motive and accusing folks of things that he's probably not exactly...
Thank you, Ms. Allard. I did rule on that and have asked Mr. Constant not to speak to motive. Mr. Constant?
Thank you.
Wait, hold on a sec.
My fear... Okay, go ahead, the mayor. Yep, go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, you also raised a point of order. What rule do you believe has been broken?
Madam Chair, the question was answered. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Go ahead, Mr. Constant.
Thank you. With the lack of security in the chambers and the email strings that I have demonstrating that there is an effort to stop the public from seeing the meeting by members of the administration, that we should leave ourselves the flexibility also to move the meeting to Room 155 at City Hall where there's guaranteed security.
Ms. Allard, what is the rule you believe has been broken?
Yeah, what is, we're trying to come to an agreement on the time and I'm not really sure what this has to do with anything.
So what is the rule you believe has been broken?
The rule that I believe has been broken is that Mr. Constant is not speaking of what we are trying to be voted on. He's speaking of something completely different and off-topic.
I believe he is speaking to the location and venue of the meeting, as that has been raised.
No, he's speaking of the past and history.
Yes, Madam Chair.
I have ruled, Ms. Allard, I believe Mr. Constant...
I would make a motion...
It's okay, you'll favor your others. I get it.
I will make a motion to remove the location. We will assume that it is at City Hall, excuse me, at Assembly Chambers, but we need the flexibility in case the administration comes up with a dilatory reason why we can't meet. And so I would ask for a second that we take out just the location with the assumption that it's at chambers. Thank you. And I would just put a coda on that, that I support the motion to continue the meeting, but if we don't have security, we need to have it where security is just going to be, which would be City Hall.
Okay, hold on, folks, please. Mr. Constant, okay, I can't hear. Okay, who, did you see who that was? Mr. Constant, to clarify, your amendment is to remove the location and keep it open-ended. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And Ms. Quinn Davidson, did you second that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moved and seconded, the amendment, oh, we're going to let the system catch up here. The person in the back who's chanting needs to stop. Please refrain from chanting.
Madam Chair, a point of personal privilege.
Mr. Mayor, no, we're not doing personal privilege now. Thank you. I'm going to go through the queue. I'm gonna go through the queue. I'm gonna go through the queue to see who wants to speak to the amendment to keep the location open to either the chambers or City Hall. Ms. Kennedy, do you want to speak to the amendment?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
This amendment doesn't help us any, it doesn't help the public. We all know that Room 155 holds about 30, maybe 40 people at the most, and it, we also know that it doesn't really have the proper recording equipment, it doesn't have, you know, if we were to move into voting on something, it doesn't have that. Anyway, I think we're much better off being here, and I would ask, actually, that we ask the mayor and potentially the municipal manager for a comment on the availability of this room, so we can kind of get that out on the table right now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Ms. Domboski, would you like to speak to the availability of the room?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through the chair, Assembly Member Kennedy, Assembly Member Kennedy, I was advised about 30 minutes ago that the clerk's office has already reserved this room for 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. I had earlier sent an email to the clerk's staff, as well as Assembly leadership, to let them know that security had told me a while ago that they cannot get staff here at 9:00 a.m. tomorrow morning, and the APD cap team, who has been so graciously staffing these meetings to keep everyone safe, does not come on duty till afternoon. So I have already expressed to Assembly leadership that the staff simply, I've been told by security, and frankly, APD, that we won't be able to staff the meeting in the morning. So I have recommended about six different alternative times, starting at 5:00 p.m. tomorrow to 10:00, or to midnight, or 10:00 p.m. And then next week, I said, any night next week, we can staff you from 5:00 p.m. to midnight. But again, tomorrow morning is very difficult. That's what I've been told by our contractor, and that's what I've been told, frankly, by the police chief.
Can I follow up, Madam Chair? Go ahead, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you. Ms. Domboski, would there be any potential of moving the 5:00 time up a couple of hours? Like, if I were to go back to the 3:00?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I believe that the cap team does come on duty, will be on duty at that time, but the body should also be aware that on Fridays, they operate at 50% capacity, so you won't have as many officers here tomorrow as you typically would. If we do have that many officers, we'll have to pull them from patrol.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. So I've got two other members in the queue, and then I would like to actually talk to the administration to see if we can come up with the time. Mr. Weddleton?
Jeez, I forget where I put myself in the queue for, but I do want to talk on the main motion, but, well, I don't know, I guess you're gonna come up with the time. I wanted to speak to the time, but are you gonna work something out?
I would like to pause again to go speak with the administration, so we can figure out a time. And so I don't know, if, Mr. Dunbar, you want to wait, or...
Well, I'd like to ask my question of the administration.
Okay, go ahead.
So, Ms. Domboski, or whoever might be able to answer this, so what time tomorrow does the security contractor come, come online? And I noticed they're not here tonight, or they left early tonight, and can you explain why that was?
Because of the size of the crowd, and frankly, the need for security. APD is leading the security effort for this meeting this evening. Frankly, I think it is the best option to keep the crowd safe and to keep Assembly members safe. With respect to the security detail, I can go check with them, and frankly, they, I can go check and see what time they can come in, but Bruce specifically told me he cannot pull staff in and get enough people here for 9:00 a.m. But I'm happy to double-check and see what time they come in. Like I said, I think if it's 3:00, 4:00, 5:00, I think, I think, I think that APD could come here, but again, the cap team only operates at 50% capacity on Friday, on Fridays generally, so we just won't have as many resources. But as I offered the leadership of the Assembly previously, we can certainly staff here at 5:00 tomorrow night. I've already offered that, and I offered every day next week.
Madam Chair, can I ask a follow-up? I'm in the queue.
Go ahead, Mr. Dunbar.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Domboski, who makes the decision regarding the size of the crowd and whether the security team, the security contractor, can play a role versus just APD? Who makes that decision in the administration?
Thank you for the question. The decision is made in consultation with the mayor and frankly, the police chief. Per Charter, Section 503, the municipal manager is responsible for the administration of government, and administration of government is police, fire, buildings, facilities, maintenance. So ultimately, Mr. Dunbar, it's my decision.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar. And so I would like to confer with the administration, and so I ask that everyone just stands by. And yes, we did, Assembly leadership did receive an email this evening from Domboski regarding the availability of the chambers. It is the practice to go ahead and notice a meeting, even if it has not yet been confirmed, so that we can ensure that we have properly noticed it as we are working out the details. So thank you for standing by. Please.
The motion on the floor is a motion to amend the main motion. It is to remove the location...
Hey, folks, please, we can't hear. If I could ask everyone to take a seat. Madam Clerk, what is the motion on the floor?
There, the main motion is the motion to continue the meeting to tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. in the chambers, and the amendment to that is to remove the location.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to extend the meeting till 10:30, so that hopefully, we can wrap this up and then maybe do a little bit more.
Second. Moved and seconded, the motion has been made to extend to 10:30 by Mr. Rivera, seconded by Ms. Allard. Seeking unanimous approval, any opposition? Seeing none, we are extended to 10:30.
Madam Chair, if I might?
Go ahead, Mr. Constant.
So I will rescind that motion if a, now, believing that some agreement has been made, if it isn't, I'll renew the motion. But I will rescind it now in hopes that there has been some kind of arrangement made.
That was a motion to withdraw your motion, the amendment, and Ms. Quinn Davidson, do you concur?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We have, we're gonna go to public testimony for an individual here, okay, for two people, and then we will come back, for a special accommodation, and we will come back to the motion on the floor. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and the area of town in which you live. Would you turn on the microphone, please? The yellow button? Perfect.
I'm Nicholas Schuman, and I'm 14. I have a problem with my breathing, and I, or to, I hate masks, masks are terrible, and I think COVID is a numb thing. And I think that it's all fake.
And how does it affect you?
Well, very bad.
But explain how it affects you.
I cannot see any people, and it...
Look up, Chorza.
It basically turns everything up, that I go where, in my therapist, and, yeah, it just messes everything up, where I can now go, in my therapy.
So I think you got that out.
Yeah.
So what do you say, you gonna stay?
Um...
So do any of you have any questions about what he said? They can't ask a question?
We can all stand up. Oh. Okay.
Am I allowed to? Am I allowed to say what he said? Of course, you can say what he said.
The part that he's concerned about is his ability with a mask. He has to be able to see facial features on people, so if he's talking with his speech pathologist, it's very hard if they both have a mask on. He can't interpret what's being said, he can't hear necessarily what's being said. We've tried multi-conversations with the masks on, so we've gone to Zoom. Zoom allow, doesn't allow you to interact, and he needs the interaction. That's what he was trying to say to you, in terms of how it affects him.
And that one.
Yes, and his OT, his other one. So it's not just speech.
Okay. You gonna stay there? See? Zero, zero.
Oh.
Okay.
I'm not...
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and go, so we can, I need to leave. Thank you. Please go ahead and state your name for the record.
I'm Tamara Schuman. We live in the South Anchorage District. Thank you for letting me speak. I did not appreciate the length of time it took when we were told we only had so much, and my oxygen had run out. And I talked with this gentleman here, but it didn't seem like it was being conveyed. So I do appreciate being able to have this opportunity to speak. I am a mother. I have worked outside of the home, I've worked inside of the home, I've provided caregiving to my father for a number of years. We've adopted, we've adopted with special needs. So we have done our part. It's a choice. We've taught our children that we have liberties here in the United States. I can wear a mask, I cannot wear a mask. We all have a belief as to whether it works or doesn't. We didn't want to live in fear. I have had COVID. I do not have a great health history. I got through it. Because of my health history, I could die from a number of things, and it could happen, and we've talked about that with our family. One adult son got COVID, our son that has cancer did not. So there's a process. While I was in the hospital, the number of people that are in there with an immunization is astounding to me. They're not putting that on the news. It has to do whether you build any antibodies. Whether the shot works or not, that's up to whoever to decide, but the studies are not out there. I have adopted. They went through the International Adoption Center in Children's of Cincinnati. We didn't just take what their immunizations were, they were tested for titers. Anybody that gets an immunization, how many are actually tested for titers, as to whether they've truly been immunized or not? I'm willing to do that. But a mandate that everybody should, we didn't mandate that everybody should get a flu vaccine. Whether I choose to or not, that's my choice. I didn't have to tell everybody that I've had the flu vaccine, or I've had a pneumonia vaccine. Why should we have to tell whether we've had the immunization for COVID? My husband had to have the immunization for COVID because he works for the airlines. Whether he wanted to do it or not, he would not be paid if he contracted COVID. He will be paid if he gets it and has had the immunization. Another point, I'm almost out of time. I'm against the mask mandate, obviously. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. So we need to go back to the main motion on the floor, which is to extend tonight's meeting to tomorrow, and that is to start at 9:00 a.m. still, I believe, is the main motion. Yes, Madam Clerk? Okay. Continue to, okay. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'd like to see if we can go back to the original motion that's, the original amendment, rather, that Ms. Kennedy had, which was to get us to 3:00 p.m. So I'd like to amend the motion before us from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. With the knowledge that the intent of this body is not to close public testimony early, earlier than 4:00 or 5:00. We're gonna keep public testimony open for folks who are coming out of work and who want to come here. So I just want to make sure that's very clear in the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Moved by Mr. Rivera, seconded by Mr. Weddleton. And then, Mr. Rivera, you spoke to it. Mr. Weddleton, do you want to speak to the amendment?
Yeah, I think 3:00 is more reasonable, especially if we commit to being here at least till 6:00 or 7:00. I don't know, when do people, works all day, till 10:00? Okay, yeah, if we, so we, yeah, that would work. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Weddleton. Mr. Constant?
Thank you. I just want to speak to the fact that the previous comments by the municipal manager establish in the record that it is in fact she who is now setting the time, place, and manner in which Assembly meetings can be conducted based on constructions of availability of staff, availability of police, and threats of violence from the members of the public who may be making such gestures. And so I want that in this record now, and that record will come in handy in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Constant. Mayor Bronson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I refer to Municipal Manager Domboski.
Ms. Domboski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I just need to clarify the record. Mr. Constant and yourself, over the course of the last couple of nights, have made comments about separation of powers. And in no way, shape, or form are we telling the Assembly when they can or cannot meet. I have clearly communicated to the Assembly when resources are available to staff your meeting. You can choose to have your meeting anytime you want. The administration is not controlling the legislative branches, time, place, or how you meet. We simply are telling you what staff resources are available. And with that, Mr. Trombley has a comment on behalf of the mayor.
Madam Chair, I just want to bring the, your attention and the body's attention to AR 2013-146 that was passed on June 4, 2013. What it did was it established a Citizens Task Force on Public Hearing Processes for the Assembly. I just read a couple of highlights, and some of the members that were on this body, not just to name a few, was Jane Anvik, Joe Lee Hall, Andy Holloman, Carolyn Ramsey, Cheryl Richardson, Arliss Sturgill-Luskey, which I'm sure many, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. I just want to highlight a couple of things from this document and their recommendation for a public process. The print, one of the principles is, the purpose of the public hearing is to solicit the views, knowledge, and ideas of the community members to help shape government action. The process should be open, accessible, and predictable. Some of the recommendations, however, for complex or contentious issues, the Assembly should adopt a process that is consistent and predictable, that allows citizens to express their perspective and to feel valued in the process. The Assembly has a duty to conduct its business only after maximizing public participation, regardless of the complexity, emotionality, or volume of the community expression. And the task force recommends that once a public hearing is started, all people who come to testify should be afforded an opportunity to testify. I think that that document speaks pretty clear for what these folks have, have come to expect.
Thank you. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to, well, can I amend this amendment? We're not on our, are we on our third round of amendments on this one? So would that...
We need to...
Would this be a third part?
We need to dispense with this amendment before there are any other amendments, unless...
Well, actually, then, Mr. Rivera brought up the fact that with, that testimony would... not end between four or five o'clock. I would just like to kind of finalize that with a real number, that we would not be ending public testimony before six o'clock. Does that, was that your intent, Mr. Rivera? There would be something along those lines? And I just think, I wanna make sure that it's a timeframe that actually people would be more, just in keeping with what Mr. Trombley just said, that it would be a timeframe that was more in keeping with what people would normally expect. Thank you.
Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, honestly, we will probably have testimony tomorrow until 10:00. But if we wanna put a specific date just to reassure the public, then I'm fine with 6:00. If that can be put into the motion, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Weddleton, do you, do you agree?
Well, I'd move to amend it to say till 10:00.
Well, the meeting will go till 10:00, but this will state that the public hearing can't be closed any earlier than 6:00 p.m. Cannot be, yeah, can't be closed.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do wanna point out that per the A.O. referenced by the member of the administration, 2013-146, that is from 2013, and there has been a subsequent version, and the discussion concerning public hearings has continued and probably will continue in terms of the rules into the future. I also wanna note that in terms of continuing the public hearing for like a full day, it is not, it's not uncommon to do that in, for ordinances of high interest to the community. And yes, starting in the morning and continuing through the afternoon into the evening would allow for people who don't feel comfortable in large crowds maybe to come in the morning, who have different work schedules, and come at lunch. So I wanted to note that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Ms. Allard on the amendment?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment on what you just said. I've been on this body for almost 18 months, and I have never, ever witnessed us coming in the day to testify with the public, or the public coming in during the day. And I just wanted to further, it really does appear, really does appear, that we are trying to exclude public testimony. And I just want the body to be aware of that.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. And I'll just clarify that we have not had such issues or ordinances in the last year that this, this body has, in terms of having days of testimony, has had before. Okay, so.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can you remind me exactly where we are in the discussion? I think right now we're talking about the beginning of, or when we would end the public hearing. I wanted to speak to the time itself.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson, would you repeat your question?
Sure, Madam Chair. I just wanna ensure that I'm speaking at the right time. Are we in the middle of determining whether 6:00 p.m. would be the end of the public hearing, or we wouldn't vote earlier or begin debate earlier than 6:00 p.m.? Because if so, I can wait.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn-Davidson. Right now, the amendment is to start at 3:00 p.m., and public hearing cannot be closed any earlier than 6:00 p.m. That's the amendment.
Okay, I could go, I could go ahead and speak to, give my comment then now.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Quinn-Davidson.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank you for trying to manage another unruly, disrespectful meeting. And I just cannot express how horrified I am as a resident of the city to watch this night after night. And the CD administration pulls stunts, like remove the spit guard and pretend that staff are not available. I cannot believe I am witnessing this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn-Davidson. I have one more person in the queue. Ms. Zalatell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to remind the body that this ordinance was brought in response to a public health emergency, and there's been considerable delay already. And we have a tool that we need to debate so that we can possibly deploy that tool to help a public health emergency. I don't think the healthcare folks could be any clearer with us about the urgency. And if that means doing something such as starting testimony earlier, or allowing people to come in to testify earlier than normal, you know, three o'clock, but if we don't end until 6:00 o'clock, I don't know that we will, we will be able to finish tomorrow. And I think it has been readily apparent that there is an intentional effort to delay getting to debate on this item. I urge a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zalatell. Seeing no other members in the queue, members may proceed to vote on the amendment to start at 3:00 p.m., and public hearing cannot be closed any earlier than 6:00 p.m.
Quick point of information.
And actually, Mr. Constant, Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you. I don't believe the motion you just read was the accurate motion before us.
Okay, so a point of information?
If I might, isn't the motion before us just the question of 6:00, not the question of meeting at 3:00 and no, no sooner than 6:00?
Actually, Mr. Constant, it's the entire thing. To start at 3:00 p.m. with a public hearing cannot be closed any earlier than 6:00 p.m. That is the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Constant. Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just wanted clarification on that because we don't actually have an ending time. So I'm assuming that we could, would we, well, it would obviously automatically end by midnight, but do we need any other kind of time in there? Or could we just figure it out as we go along?
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. I had said 10:00 earlier. Ms. Allard?
So that's included?
Yes. 10:00 p.m. Ms. Allard?
Thank you. I just listened to one of my colleagues state from Midtown that we're under an emergency order, or emergency or not. So I, I mean, let me just clarify. Could we please ask the administration? Because I know that the governor's not. If you're gonna quote something and you're gonna say something, you're gonna publicly put it out there, I believe we need clarification from the administration.
Ms. Zalatell, would you clarify, please, what you said about the situation? There's a question from Ms. Allard.
No, it wasn't directed to Ms. Allatell. It was directed to the administration.
And I am directing it to Ms. Zalatell because she made the statement, and she, Ms. Zalatell can clarify first what she said, and then we will go from there. Ms. Zalatell, would you clarify, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did use the words "public health emergency." I did not say "public health declaration," or "a declared public health emergency." Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zalatell.
I need her to define what a public health emergency is.
Ms. Allard, that's not relevant to this vote regarding the amendment. It is not relevant to the amendment. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you. Called the question.
The question has been called. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, members may proceed to vote on the motion to call the question. This is not a debatable motion. It requires eight. Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Zalatell?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Constant?
Yes.
The motion to call the question on the amendment passes 11 to 0. Members may now proceed on the vote to amend the continuation of the special meeting to tomorrow at 3:00 p.m. with the public hearing not to end before 6:00 p.m. Sorry, let me get the pen. Okay, are you ready? Ready? Okay. Mr. Peterson?
No. No.
Ms. Zalatell?
No.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
No.
The amendment passes 7 to 4. We now have the main motion before us. Seeing no other members in the queue, oh, actually, Mr. Rivera, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I just wanted to clarify what this motion is and what it does, just one more time for the body and for the public. So tomorrow, we will continue this meeting starting at 3:00 p.m., and we will keep going on until we keep, we hear from everyone, which probably won't end tomorrow, if we're being realistic. So that provision for 6:00 p.m. is just to ensure and to provide confidence to the public that we aren't gonna be closing the public testimony any earlier than 6:00 p.m. But it's likely that we're not gonna be able to close it at 6:00 p.m. So just providing that clarity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. Members may proceed to vote on the motion to extend the special meeting to tomorrow. Continue the special meeting to tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. in the chambers and amended to 3:00 p.m. Sorry, I'm reading the screen, okay? Continue the meeting to tomorrow at 3:00 p.m., and public hearing cannot be closed any earlier than 6:00 p.m. Yes, in the chambers. Mr. Peterson on the main motion?
Yes.
Mr. Constant? Ms. Zalatell?
No.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
No.
The motion passes 9 to 2. We are now back on public testimony. Please state your name for the record and the area in which, of town in which you live. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dr. Deborah Contney. I am in Region 4, District 4. And I would like to say that I am here representing a number of surgeons, anesthesiologists, and other physicians that are working or on call tonight that share the same viewpoint. We oppose this mandate. I would like to start with the fact that I'm a surgeon that serves the people of Anchorage and also the state of Alaska. We're on call 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to take care of all these people. We take care of every person regardless of their disease, or their background, or where they came from. I request you, our representatives of this community, to represent us and support our lives and our livelihoods. I ask you to uphold the freedom granted to us, the citizens of the United States of America, as granted by our Constitution. We are a people of choice. I typically respect those who choose to wear a mask, and I request your respect to those of us that do not. I served in the United States military, in the medical corps, for many years through wars and overseas deployments, in support of your and our freedoms, our freedom to make a choice. As a surgeon, I have worn a mask for over 20 years in the operating room, where masks belong. There have been many studies dating 50 years ago, most likely, or most recently in the last 30 years, have proved beyond a doubt, these are in randomized controlled Level 1 data studies that show that operating room masks as worn by surgeons and/or nursing team and anesthesiologists do not stop viruses. There have been many studies that show that particular ear, nose, and throat surgeons are affected significantly from typical viruses that not only cause them to contract the virus, but also causes oropharyngeal cancers. That's like in your nose and your mouth. As a surgeon, I carefully present to my patients all of the risks and benefits of the surgery proposed. The patient and the family therefore carefully consider these risks and benefit and make their decision. The risk of a mask far outweighs the benefits of wearing a mask. I would like to let you know that you may or may not have had the opportunity to read the newest New York Times data. It does show that for the state of Alaska, our cases have gone down 20%. They, more than they were last week. They also show that COVID diagnosis in Anchorage are down 44% over the last seven days.
Thank you for your testimony. Okay, would the next person please come forward and state your name for the record?
Madam Chair, point of information?
Hard to hear you, Mr. Mayor. Did you say point of information?
Yes, Madam Chair.
What is your procedural question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Madam Chair, with, with the testimony of that caliber, I would ask if she has something more to say and allow her to finish saying it.
No, Mr., I'm sorry, ma'am. No, there's no additional time. Everyone gets three minutes. We, everyone gets three minutes.
Madam Chair, I'm in the queue.
Do you have a point of order or point of information, Mr. Mayor?
No, I have a question for the speaker.
No, we are not doing questions tonight. That is the ruling of the body.
Madam Chair.
Jamie, do you have, or Ms. Allard, do you have a point of order or point of information?
I would have a point of information. Could you please, as my aide, I don't know where she's at, can we please ask the speaker who just spoke to leave her information?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Members are encouraged to do that.
So I wanna ask her if she can please leave her informa, oh, my aide's got her. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allard. Welcome. Please state your name for the record. Oh, get that on.
Hi, my name is Samantha Barnett, and I am 10 years old, and I live in South Anchorage. I am here to ask you not to force us to wear masks in school. I hear on the TV tonight that less people are getting sick. I have asthma, and I'm not old enough to get vaccinated. It is hard for me to breathe with a mask on. And last year, I kept having attacks and getting sick in my mask. But when I don't wear a mask, other kids and teachers are mean to me because they think I am rude and don't understand. I have asthma and I'm not old enough to get vaccinated. It is hard for me to breathe with a mask on. And last year, I kept having attacks and getting sick in my mask. But when I don't wear a mask, other kids and teachers are mean to me because they think I am rude and don't understand. I can't breathe. Wearing a mask made me want to quit school. I am scared to feel that way again. Thank you again for your time tonight.
Okay, next, please. Welcome, please state your name for the record. I'm going to go ahead and start the timer. Please turn on the microphone.
My name is Frank McQuarrie. I spent 37 years in the Hillside District, and the last 30 in the Sand Lake District. I have a lot of Scotch genes, so I know that when people are under attack, they tend to want to tack back. But I'm going to ask you folks to back down just a little bit and think about, A, the oath of office that you took. Some of you took it twice. Military officers, probably third, at least Forrest, I'm sure, has taken at least three times. As attorneys, they've taken it in that capacity. Jamie Allard is in office with a military ticket. Dave Bronson has taken that office. I don't think any of you want to damage Anchorage. I don't think you're out to damage me. But this has gotten to be more of a pissing contest than a deliberative body. You've basically ruled Anchorage as the Assembly without a mayor for two years. It's time to go back to the Constitution, to the Charter, and do it the right way. Dave Bronson is an honorable man. He cares about the people of Anchorage. These people out here do too. Now, it's gotten real personal, and that means we're not going to make rational decisions. There's a lot of misinformation going around. This last so-called spike had more to do with the way numbers were reported than anything else. Providence was very slow in reporting its statistics, so we got in one lump the numbers for July, August, and part of September, making it look like there was a surge. There was no surge. A friend of mine with a medical background was in the emergency room over the weekend. Two COVID cases, empty halls. This crisis is being exaggerated, and we're not getting accurate information, and you folks owe it to us not to peddle that kind of misinformation. You can go on the John Hopkins site, look at all the data from around the world, you'll see multiple countries, third-world countries, with vast populations and low infection, low vaccine rates, performing much better than we are. And the difference is that those governments and those people in charge made sure that everybody had both prophylactic and therapeutics available. They didn't, like we here, tell people that have contracted to go home, drink lots of liquids, and come back and you get really sick. Because by that time, they're on the verge of having a cytokine storm that will kill them. It's not the virus that's killing them, it's their own immune system. There are double-blind studies on any number of prophylactics and therapeutics that will prevent that from happening. It's up to you to be better informed than you are. Anchorage is not a better place in the last couple of years when you've been in charge, and that's because you haven't done your job.
Thank you for your testimony. Ma'am, please come forward. We're getting close to 10:30, so this will be the final testifier. Please state your name for the record.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to extend.
An area of town in which you live.
Hello, my name is Kaisen Claw.
Hold on, sorry, ma'am. Ms. Allard?
I'd like to make a motion to extend until 11:00 PM, please. We've, and the reason why, just so.
Wait, was it seconded? Okay, moved by Ms. Allard, seconded by Ms. Kennedy.
And I don't know if people in line would be so kind, but there are children here that came out tonight to testify, and they have school tomorrow morning, so. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to extending to 11:30, or 11? Seeing no opposition, we're extending to 11. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kaisen Claw. I am a part of District 2 from Eagle River. I am Navajo, 17 years old, and a senior in high school, and I am against this ordinance. I am old enough to see the divide in our community amongst officials. I am responsible for my own health, as well as my own decisions. I am appalled that I have to fight for my constitutional rights, or else they'll be taken. I believe that it is I that should decide what I put on my face. This ordinance represents isolation, respiratory issues like asthma, and violation of our basic constitutional rights. I have seen firsthand division between American citizens. I witnessed teachers against students. Last week, I witnessed a peer have a severe anxiety attack, but still notified to put on a mask while she was coughing. I am here to represent those uncertain students who don't have a voice in the chambers right now. I am here to bring justice to the class of 2022 and so forth, that may not have a happy graduation that we deserve because of this ordinance. I am here to represent frontline and federal workers whose jobs are being jeopardized if they don't speak freely against this ordinance. I am here for my freedom and my people. Thank you, Mayor Bronson, Ms. Kennedy, and Ms. Allard, for your integrity and leadership throughout this meeting.
Thank you. Welcome. Please state your name for the record and area of town in which you live.
My name is Silas Estelila, and I am from District 3. I attend Grace Christian School. I'm lucky enough to attend there. So I'm going to rewind to the beginning. I was told two weeks. Two weeks to stop the curve, you know? Help it all out. It'll all be fine, they said. It'll help stop COVID, you guys go back to your normal lives. It's been over a year now, guys. A year. I am a sophomore now. I was a freshman when this started. Come on. You guys are brainwashing us. It's not as dangerous as it is. The statistics here say that the death rate of people around my age is 0.2%. 0.2%. And you guys are forcing me to wear this piece of cloth that also reaches, has shown, has done nothing, really, to help, to stop the spread. It's affected me mentally, really. And I'm not saying, like, oh, some person told me to put on a mask, oh, it's such a big deal. No, I mean, I've lost friends over this. People are taking this so seriously, this flu-leg virus so seriously, that they are demonizing people like me, people of my beliefs, because we don't want to wear a piece of cloth. And I'm sick of it. I'm sick of losing people over this. I'm sick of being demonized, and I'm sick of being called a lawbreaker by people like you. Kids, especially the younger ones, are very impressionable. And you guys have made them believe that this virus is going to kill them, and going to kill the people around them. I was called out a couple weeks ago by a kid in cars. I was running to get groceries for my parents, and I wasn't wearing a mask, and the masks were not required in there either. And this kid walks up to me, he's holding his mother's hand, and he's like, if you don't wear your mask, I might die. Not those exact words, but like, if you don't wear your mask, like, I could catch and I could die. And he was, he was kind of going on long, but like, it was, he genuinely believed that this thing was very dangerous and that it could kill him if I stood close to him. And that's scary to think about. Do you guys really want your kids believing that? Yeah. I wouldn't want mine to either. I don't want my kid living in fear all of his life, because you guys want to take control. I want my freedom back. I want to live back in the good old days where I wasn't demonized. So screw your policies. I want my freedom.
Welcome. Can you pull the microphone down, or maybe someone could assist?
My name is Rich Robinson.
Can you go a little closer?
My name is Rich Robinson. I am from South Anchorage, Alaska. Stop this mask mandate. It does not help. It is really difficult for me to wear a mask. I want, it is not, it's hard to breathe, and feels, I am feeling sad because losing because I cannot see and smile. It's a high risk from COVID-19 because I have autoimmune disease. It is not your job to take care of me. I cannot for my safe, I wore my hands and drank water and be in a healthy diet, exercising, and the vitamins will keep you, keep me healthy. I want to know that taking care of my people and to see, to see your faces again. Thank you for Mayor Bronson, for fighting for my freedom. I want to bring my guard to without wearing a mask. Thank you, Dave Bronson.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Justice Preston. I am nine. I'm in District 2. It was my own idea to come here and ask you to please not make me wear a mask again in Anchorage. I don't like to wear masks because it is too hard to breathe, and my mouth gets all sweaty, and I'll have to take off my mask and wipe my mouth all the time. I don't think they are helpful, plus, they don't even help me from getting COVID-19 because I can't stop touching and messing with it. COVID-19 doesn't even really bother the kids. My parents are the ones who need to make health decisions for me and my health, not you guys. You would be surprised at how much I wash my hands, take my vitamins, and eat my vegetables, even more than my sisters. Not that's any of your concern. I think we can make these decisions for ourselves. Thank you.
Welcome, please state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Eden Preston. I'm in District 2. I'm 12 years old, and I'm a lifelong Alaskan, born and raised. I'm here to tell you why I believe this ordinance is not a good idea. First of all, my parents did not ask, force, or even suggest me to testify here tonight. It was my idea. here tonight. It was my idea. They have taught me to think for myself. Respectfully, it is not your job to control things like my health choices, but to protect my freedom. I do not believe it is my responsibility to protect the health of adults around me. Isn't it supposed to be the other way around? Kids don't wear their masks right. Heck, adults don't either. Kids can't keep their hands off of them, and hasn't it been scientifically proven that they don't work at that point anyways? Kids need to be able to breathe. Kids need to be able to see faces, smiles, and expressions. Wearing masks make us more vulnerable for bad guys who want to hurt me or my siblings. Not to mention, none of us honestly like to wear them. They are so uncomfortable. I figure skate, and during the last mandate, my mom was very pregnant, and she was told she didn't have to wear a mask because of a health exemption. However, she still reluctantly had us wear ours to be respectful and honor the rules, despite our family's belief that for children in particular, they do more harm than good. One week, I watched as an employee follow my mama out the door and confronted her and yelled at her for 20 minutes, insisting she needed to be masked even though she knew my mama was exempt. It broke my heart to see my mom crying quietly in her chair once we got home, knowing she wouldn't be able to come watch us at our lessons anymore, and how badly she had been treated, being seven months pregnant. Along those same lines, because my mom was usually not wearing a mask, I often felt discriminated against and was confronted for not putting my mask on fast enough when I would come off the ice and when other kids took even longer, but no one ever said a word to them. Beyond all that, now that my baby sister is here, when we've traveled, we have found that wearing masks is virtually impossible. My one-year-old little sister gets so frustrated that she can't see our faces and continuously pulls them down. We spend more time fighting with her and fixing our masks. It's really ridiculous. At the Alaska State Fair, when we were all outside, I saw a small child with a mask on and a leash. Explain it away as you like, but if you ask me, that's a pretty sad and pathetic sight. Yes, I'm just a kid, but I'm asking you to consider my freedom of choice as a citizen of this city and great country. God bless you. You're going to need it if you pass this thing. Thank you.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Isaiah Stachowski, and my school is PNA, Pacific Northern Academy. I am 10 years old and in fifth grade. I don't think kids should be wearing masks. It's not right. I don't feel like me when I wear my mask. My friends shouldn't be wearing them either. It doesn't feel right to see, to not see their faces or their expressions. It's hard to understand my teacher. It's hard to learn, and even harder when someone has learning disabilities. I don't like that my three-year-old sister has to wear a mask either. It doesn't make sense, and I want this to stop immediately. The masks are harmful and do a good job. Don't do a good job. The coronavirus is a small, is small and can slip through the gaps of the mask. I think people should take care of their bodies and do their best to stay healthy. It's my body, and I should be able to decide if I want to wear a mask or not. We hear numbers about people in hospitals, but not numbers about people who get sick. Heal outside of the hospital or who have natural immunity. Why we are not considered the important information. Coronavirus is not a childhood disease, and it is not easily transmitted by kids. Kids shouldn't have to wear masks. I always feel like I'm hanging upside down when I wear a mask. Being afraid of Corona is like being dunked in a pool of snow. But not wearing a mask is like being in the sun. That's all I have to say. Thank you. I gotta say, I was completely nervous.
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Joshua K, and I am from District 6. First, I would like to just say that the mask does not help the human being against COVID-19. It actually makes them more sick, and it's more possible for them to get sick. Also, it's my choi... it should be my choice in this free country to wear a mask if I think it's needed or not. And if I think it's not needed, I shouldn't. And if you think it helps and you want to wear one for yourself, then go right on ahead. And I think that it should be my choice. And if I'm allowed to have life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, I am supposed to be able to pursue happiness. And I can't pursue happiness with a mask on, because it makes me feel depressed and not being able to see much around me. Thank you. That's all I want to say.
Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Kennedy. I'm from the Bay Shore area, and I oppose this mandate. I'd like to say to Mr. Bronson, our family prays for you and your family every night. Thank you for what you do. I'm a teacher of kids with special needs for the Anchorage School District. I'm a business owner, a husband, a father, son, and most importantly, a father of Jesus. I'm here tonight because of the impact mask mandates have had on my work and personal life. Teaching with a mask on limits the effectiveness of my teaching, the personal connection with my students, and the ability to clearly communicate instructions. I went to school for seven years, two of which for teaching students with disabilities. And one of the foundations of instruction is teaching children to be independent, think for themselves, and limit learned helplessness. Learned helplessness is, according to the Oxford Dictionary, "A condition which a person suffers from a sense of powerlessness arising from a traumatic event or persistent failure to succeed." It is thought to be one of the underlying causes of depression. I am here representing the kids with disabilities that I work with that don't have a voice. Some of them have spoke tonight. They do not support this tyrannical mandate. The kids I teach largely are not able to tolerate a mask on their face, yet we are being told to continue to push the mask back on over their face and mouth. They're chewing the mask, they're eating it, they're choking on it, and they're suffocating from it. I regularly see kids on the floor, out of breath, dizzy, because teachers continue to put, not me, continue to put the mask back on their face. What kind of example are we setting by mandating diapers to be worn on our faces, acting like this is not traumatic for us and for our kids? Denying us the right to choose whether to wear or not wear a mask over our mouths is one step closer to this learned helplessness that I referred to earlier for adults unwilling to look at the ineffectiveness of wearing cloth masks. That's all I have for tonight.
Welcome.
Hi. My name is Faith Sanders, and I am from District Number 3. And I'm here to make my voice heard. I am a junior in high school, and, you know, my future is ride of Fred me, and I aspire to be a teacher. However, this is gonna be very hard as teaching. I am already a TA for kindergarten class, and already having kids, having to try and nunciate words to them, that's already difficult. So with a mask, that's just gonna make it even more difficult. With kids, like, I'm gonna talk about, like, the kids' perspective as coming in. When they first come in and they see a teacher in mask, they're not gonna be happy. They're gonna be frustrated. Oh, never seeing a smile, really. You just can fake it the entire time. You can also not see the teacher's lips. And again, there's some students that learn by looking at teachers' lips. You are being, you're like putting children in a disability by making them wear masks. In general, I mean, kids through all ages go through depression, stress, anxiety, through this, because, I mean, they're covering their mouths and they're not able to breathe most of the time. Also, I think that it should be the parents' responsibilities to choose if their kid should or should not wear a mask. I mean, you guys aren't their parent. They are. So, I don't think you guys should be forcing this upon anyone. I would like to end with two Bible verses, because I am a Christian. And the first one comes from Matthew 6:34. "Therefore, do not worry about tomorrow, for tomorrow will worry about itself. Each day has enough troubles of its own." And the last one is Psalms 118:6. "The Lord is with me. I will not be afraid. What can mere mortals do to me?" Thank you.
Welcome. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Scott Louber, District 6. COVID is terrible, but it seems like a lot of folks are forgetting that the Constitution and laws that we have are not suspended in a time of crisis. In April of 2020, the FDA issued an Emergency Youth Use Authorization, EUA, authorizing the use of face masks as a medical device to prevent the spread of SARS-CoV-2. Regarding EUAs, Title 21 of the United States Code states that individuals are to be informed of the potential benefits and risks of such use, and are to be informed of the option to accept or refuse administration of the product. I didn't see an option to refuse in your ordinance, but I did see a fine for refusing. Federal law strictly prohibits mandating products granted in EUA. The Alaska State Constitution states under home rule powers that a city may exercise all legislative powers not prohibited by law. To enact this ordinance would be a violation of federal state statute and thereby a violation in the Alaska State Constitution, Article 10. Regarding constitutional rights to make one's own choices as to medical treatments, the United States Supreme Court has backed this up, saying a person has constitutionality, protected liberty, and refusing unwanted medical treatment. The New York Court of Appeals followed it with that every human being of adult age possesses the right to refuse treatments. This ordinance seems to violate everything mentioned above: the U.S. Constitution, the Alaska State Constitution, the U.S. Supreme Court rulings, and federal statutes. The city does not have the authority to enact this unlawful ordinance, and it is unenforceable. Anyone attempting to enforce this unlawful order will be in violation of Title 18 U.S. Code, Section 242, which makes it a crime for a person acting under the color of any law to willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution and laws of the United States. Mayor Bronson, I would love to see a point of information at some one of these meetings in order to get the city attorney's opinion as to whether this ordinance is even legal, given what I've shared. And who would enforce it, and is the enforcement of it even legal? And if a yes vote by Assembly members for this ordinance is in violation of the law and constitutes a crime, what will be the consequence of such a willful act? And will those individuals be prosecuted for breaking the law? If a vote persists, I urge my representatives, Reddleton and LaFrance, to vote no and not support this ordinance unless it is absolutely clear in the ordinance that gives the individuals the right to refuse and to not comply without consequence.
Welcome.
Hey, excuse me?
You can go ahead and get started. However, there's just one minute left.
All right. So, there is always an easy solution to every problem, neat, plausible, and wrong. That is a quote by H.L. Mencken, which, by the way, was a liberal, and I think that most of you in this room would identify as liberals. What you guys are pushing is anything but liberal. I hope you guys understand that, and that's a betrayal of trust. Secondly, what are we doing? We did this last year. Did it work? No? So why are we doing it again? Why are you putting us through this? You know, you just had a whole line of students from schools come through, and they're talking about how they're being traumatized because of not being able to breathe, not being able to see other people's faces, being stigmatized, and everything else under the sun, and you're just gonna do it anyways. How cruel. Why? What in the hell is your problem? Really, really? What in the hell is your problem? Because this cannot come from anywhere but the abyss of hell. Look, I heard somebody talk about someone on the autism spectrum. I'm on the higher functioning end of that. I'm telling you, I cannot tolerate masks very well. And I'm an adult. So what about kids who don't even have a voice? That are in school, they're basically, "Shut up and put that rag on your face." And your answer is to them, "Just do as you're told, Johnny." That's child abuse. Really, it is. Had the, if there was not a pandemic, and you had a parent forcing their kids to walk around with rags on their face like that, you would rightfully report them to Child Protective Services, and the foster care system would get involved. But you get away with it because you have the power. Well, you know what? I hope that changes this election. I really hope it does. Maybe for your sake.
So, the meeting is continued until tomorrow, 3:00 p.m.